We'd stand for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have the roll call.
Mr. Jamie Gerardi.
Here.
Mr. Derek Montlet.
Here.
Mr. Peter Hansel. Mr. John Ruddy.
Here.
Mr. Christopher Poole.
Here.
Mr. Chris Williams.
Here.
And Chairman Charles Craig.
Here.
And the proof of publication, please.
The items were advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on September 6th, 2023, October 4th, 2023, and October 11th, 2023, or by certified mailings and site posting.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the amendments as submitted?
Motion to approve the amendments from July 20th and August 24th.
Second.
Motion in a couple of seconds. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign. Okay. For those of you who haven't had the benefit of being at one of these meetings, let me just run through the structure of the meeting very quickly. With the Planning Commission, we're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. We meet every two weeks. We serve as a local planning agency, and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. And the Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment, land development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the county commission, it's important for you to attend the appropriate county commission meeting. For you, for you, for those of you who are not familiar with the format of the meeting, we have three sections. We'll have, may have continuances requested from the staff or from the applicant. It's been our tradition to approve those requests unless there are extenuating circumstances. And then we have consent items. Those items are where we receive an application. We haven't had any, any objection from either written or in person. And those items will be gone through one at a time. If there's something on consent today that you'd like to have heard, or you wanted to have discussed, as I call it out, please raise your hand, and we can always pull it from the consent agenda and move it to the regular items. And those are the items that will not be placed on consent or not continued, and will be part of the regular discussion for the bulk of the meeting. The applicants will have three minutes to make their presentation. Anybody in the audience who has questions will have three minutes to come up and ask their questions or state their concerns, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to come back up and try to answer those concerns. Unless there has been a request in writing at least 24 hours prior to this meeting for extra time, we're going to try to hold our, our times to those, to those minutes, three minutes and five minutes. If anybody has a phone here that's not on the silent position, it's a good time to pull it out and put it on the silent position so we won't interrupt anybody that's speaking. And the, I'm also asked to remind you that we request that when you address the Planning Commission, you address the commission in general and not any specific person. We want to try to maintain mutual respect between the attendees and the commission. So, if you please do that, that would be helpful. And before we start the meeting, we want to open the meeting for public comment on items not appearing on the agenda but pertinent to this body. So if there's anyone that wants to speak on an item that's not on today's agenda, this would be your opportunity to come up and speak. Before we do that, let me do two other things. If you do plan to give testimony, or in other words, get up and speak today, I'd like you to stand and raise your right hand and be sworn, please. Anybody that plans to talk today?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give as a truth tell, if you got it? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I think before we get into the meat of the meeting, we have some business to take care of. Mr. Pito, does he want to come up? And you better sound the halls for Elizabeth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Nick Targus. Pito's Planning and Development. October is National Community Planning Month, and we wanted to make sure that we recognize and appreciate all the different people that participate in the planning program here at Pasco County. Earlier this month, the Board of County Commissioners recognized the Planning Commission through a resolution. We also were able to present an appreciation award to Mr. Goldstein. Today, I want to focus our appreciation, attention on Elizabeth Blair, who is the Senior Assistant County Attorney. Elizabeth helps us in the Planning and Development Department a lot. She works on, at least, most of my interactions with Elizabeth are happening through comprehensive plan amendments, which is a pretty big deal. So a lot of the work that you see as the local planning agency, when you see the comprehensive plan amendments come forward, they're being developed by our team, and Elizabeth is providing the legal support to help us on these very important planning matters. And she's been doing it for a long time, and I think deserves quite a bit of recognition and gratitude and appreciation for her long service and dedication to the county and also to the planning program and the Planning and Development Department here in Pasco. So with that, we wanted to recognize Elizabeth with a certificate of appreciation and award her our premier challenge coin. We have a recognition program here in Pasco, in the Planning and Development Department, to provide recognition to team members who do exemplary work over long periods of time. And we wanted to appreciate Elizabeth and present it to her.
Okay, Elizabeth Blair. You have 30 minutes.
I do. I'm Elizabeth Blair, Senior Assistant County Attorney. For some of you that don't know, I've been here since 1999, and I have always been involved with the planning department, previously known as our growth management department. And I have always been the person to handle annexations, comp plan amendments. I dabble sometimes in the zoning world, and I do work with them on some other studies and special projects that they do as well. So I really do appreciate the recognition. I've seen a lot since 1999 happen in this county. It's been tremendously growing, and it looks like it will continue for quite some time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
You're reserving the rest of your time for?
For rebuttal.
For rebuttal.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say I appreciate Elizabeth. We've done a lot of work together over the years, and, you know, with some of the agreements we've had with the school district, and of course, David and Elizabeth both worked tremendously on school concurrency when that came into effect. So, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. And you had David recognized last meeting at about nine o'clock at night, I think. Thank you, Elizabeth. And thank you, Terry. Okay. Now we're on to the next one.
Mr. Chair, I do want to mention that for the record, we did have two people that signed up to speak on WebEx, and none of those two folks, Lori Kirby and Denise Holmes, they are not on WebEx. So just for the record.
All right, thank you.
All right. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. We're going to start on item PC 3, which is PDD 240031. It's for small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAS 2215, Gowers Corners PD. The request is to continue the item to the 12723 Local Planning Agency meeting at 1:30 in Date City.
All right. So, PC 3, is the applicant present? Is there anyone here to speak on it? If not, do I hear a motion to continue?
Motion to continue.
Second.
Second. Further discussion of the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign. Okay.
Following item is PC 4, which is PDD 247696. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Greenfield Place West LLP. Greenfield Place West rezoning for change in zoning from an AC agricultural district to an I-1 light industrial park district containing approximately 297 acres with a voluntarily agreed-upon deed restriction that limits, that reserves the uses to those uses listed in the I-1 light industrial park district. Comes here with a recommendation of approval.
All right. PC 4, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Seeing objections? Okay.
Move on to PC 5. PC 5 is PDD 240056. This is a development agreement for the Renner MPUD. It's an actual modification to a development agreement. KB Holmes comes here with a recommendation of approval.
All right.
Denise, can I just ask a, just a question?
Sure.
Did this get mailed notice as well, or just newspaper notice?
Let me, let me check the land development code because I'm not sure development agreements get mailed notice.
I'm only asking because there was a number of citizens that were interested in this project when it went to the board, and another amendment.
This is PC 4 we're talking about, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I thought we were on 5.
We're on 5.
No, we are. Yeah, we are on 5. Yes.
Just scrolling to the table in the land development code. Just give me just a moment.
Well, I miss, Shelley, do you want to just tell me whether you did mail notice or not?
Yes, Shelley Johnson, 6400 Madison Street. I mailed, and I also posted even though we didn't need to.
Okay, that answers my question. All right.
Okay, thank you, Shelley.
Denise, you can go back to where you were. Sorry.
Sure. I think that that was the end of the consent agenda because the following item is a land development code amendment.
Okay. Well, just let me just ask if there's anyone here to object.
And for the record, development agreements are only published. They're not mailed nor posted.
Okay.
That sounds like Shelley went above and beyond, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign. All right.
Item PC, P6 is going to be presented by Catherine Hartley, who is on WebEx.
Okay. Catherine, are you with us?
She's showing that she's unmuted.
Catherine, are you with us? All right, well, let's, let's come back to that one then. Okay.
I see her.
Yeah, I see her. She's
She's waving.
She can hear us, I think.
Are you muted?
She's not showing it's being muted.
Yeah, she might be. It's probably a problem her end with her mic.
Yeah. You have a different microphone you can use?
We're going to try to be really good at reading lips.
Charades, sign language, some sign language.
Okay, I'll tell you what, let's, even though we can see her.
Want to move to the next item?
Let's move to the next item, yeah. And we can come back to Catherine.
Sure. So item P7 will be presented by Amy Toll.
Good afternoon. Amy Toll with Planning and Development. The item before you is Seven Diamonds Commerce Park MPUD in the name of PDD 24-7649. The applicant, the proposal is a rezoning application from R2 Low Density Residential to MPUD Master Plan Unit Development to allow for the development of light and heavy industrial uses on 188.71 acres. It is located on the east side of Highway 41, approximately 4.5 miles north of State Road 52. Here is the general location. It is located in the central market area. The aerial map view of the subject site. Current zoning is R2. And the existing future land use is currently RES 1, residential one dwelling unit per gross acre. There is an accompanying comprehensive plan amendment that was heard a few months back proposing this area to PD Flu. Here's the master plan that accompanies the Seven Diamonds Commerce Park as well. As you can see, the certain heavy industrial uses are going to be centralized to the interior of the project's scope. I have highlighted here the light industry being on the south and the north, but I also want to make note that the entire project is also just planned for light industry. So the heavy industrial uses will be set back at least 500 feet from the north and at a minimum of 300 feet to the south where the wetland is located. So the applicant is seeking the following variations from the land development code, being LDC Section 901.6D11. The applicant is requesting relief to provide connections to the north, east, and south for the reasons being the north is a platted subdivision, the east is an existing CSX railway, and to the south, there's a category one wetland. Additionally, Section 805.6, this is in place to put the maintenance responsibility of the wetlands and the upland buffers under one entity. The applicant has recommended or requested to put it under a reciprocal easement agreement, which does still uphold the intent of the code of under one entity. And lastly, Section 1105.2 for landscape buffering. The applicant is requesting relief to eliminate the internal landscaping buffering due to it being an industrial site. So for those reasons, staff is amenable to the requested relief. And with that, we recommend approval with the conditions of the requested rezoning petition to the Board of County Commissioners. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Sherman Dyess?
So the landscaping on the outside of the project is still going to be maintained, the buffering?
Yeah, the landscaping to the buffer, to the outside is still going to be maintained. They are requesting relief against the CSX railway.
The internal, gotcha.
Yeah, you have any other questions? Okay, if not, is the applicant present?
Good afternoon. Barbara Willhite, 6327 Graham Boulevard, Newport, Ritchie. Great to be here. Congratulations, David. I didn't know that you got an award last week. And Elizabeth, I hired them both.
You would have had to be here at nine o'clock to find that out. Apparently, we need to give Barbara an award. I think that's what she suggested. Terry, next time, we get Barbara.
The, we were here before for the transmittal of the comp plan amendment. That comp plan amendment was approved by the board for transmittal and went to the state and came back with no, no comments. So we're here with the MPUD. Regarding landscape buffers, we actually put those, the external ones are on the face of the MPUD, trying to be very clear with what our setbacks will be, what our landscaping will be, where our uses will be. We applied for this in January 2022. So we've been working at it, and really for all of, a lot of the questions that, that the neighbor has asked, well, not a direct neighbor, but somebody in the community, we worked very hard on conditions that I have not seen on any other project, especially for our, our heavy industrial uses. We don't have all heavy industrial uses. We don't have all of I-2. We have a select few heavy industrial uses that, that relate to where this project is. This project is across from Seven Diamonds Mine. It's a lime rock mine. And so the, there's a high demand to take materials from that mine and take them across the street to this location and use them to manufacture things that we all need and we all use. If not in our house today, but in our children's house they want to build tomorrow, or a relative that's moving to Florida and building. So these are, these are necessary products to be produced. This location is ideal because of the proximity and the trips. Because these, these trucks are going to go somewhere. If it's not this facility, they're going to be making more trips on the road. Not only that, does that put more trips, trucks on the road, it also increases the price of product that we would, that we all have, that we all would experience. Not to forget that we do, we are in an area where we want to make sure that we're good neighbors, and I can tell you that the county attorney's office, we have written the most unusual conditions that I've ever seen in all my years to make sure that we have double enforcement authority. So not only do we have stringent DEP permitting, which I have our, our expert consultant, who is one of the best that I've ever met, who does this for a living, is, is permit these types of facilities. But we have also add them into the county, the county zoning ordinance here so they can be enforced by the county if for some reason the state doesn't enforce, if for some reason our users aren't following the rules. So I have my full team here. I think my client was feeling a little ill, so, but I feel very strongly that we can answer any questions as a team, and we look forward to your support, hopefully, and appreciate all that staff has done to work with us on getting to this point. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Barbara.
So just out of curiosity, and it doesn't really matter, but does, do your client, does your client foresee accessing the rail in the future of this project?
I don't, I don't know. And you know, there's, there's, there's our near future, and then there's a longer future.
Right.
And so I think in the near future, maybe not, but we, you, you will see that this property will evolve over time because eventually the lime rock mine will build out and expire. And then, and then as you build, these, these facilities tend to locate where people are building. So I think there'll be another life of, of the product, of this project over time, and I think that proximity to rail. And that's why we did no landscape buffer on that side, so that we can allow that to happen, you know, if there's a demand for it.
That's kind of what I figured. That's why I was asking. So I think the location's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay. Anybody here that would like to speak or have questions? You can have your name and address, please.
Stephanie Schatzman, 15234 Scannio Drive.
Okay, and Stephanie, you've been sworn, right?
Yes, I have.
Okay, thank you.
Seven Diamonds letter on hearing dates had September 21 for planning. I showed up only to find out it wasn't true. Sending an email to planning the same day, asking for the dates and answers to numerous questions with a copy of Seven Diamonds letter resulted in no response. I followed up a week later and received the dates. I am still waiting for answers to my questions. This is the norm. Lego Verde owners originally wanted to build million-dollar homes around the lake. Pasco County sacrificed the area for approval of a limestone blasting mine to avoid a Burt Harris loss out, even though they were financially imploding, and they went bankrupt 11 months later. Planning, Pasco Planning 2011 report states, "Under recommendation, that future expansion of the limestone mining activities should be discouraged or prohibited in order to maintain the vision and character of the area, as well as protect the ecological form of the area." The opposite happened. Dr. James P. Gilz Jr. and Lou Friedland, the rich guys, were approved in 2017 for limestone mine. Now those two are back wanting heavy industry in the form of a concrete plant that is requesting wells and septic tanks. Crossbar Well Field abuts the entire eastern boundary of the proposed contract, concrete plant. Just like the mine, it appears that adverse impacts caused by heavy industrial use are managed by the state agencies, and thus citizens are basically on their own. According to Pasco 2050, comprehensive plan objected 1.6 groundwater and surface water protection. It states, "To preserve the well fields by eliminating potential adverse impacts to groundwater from adjacent land uses. Zoning shall only be allowed upon the condition that no land use that meets the definition of industrial shall be permitted within such zoning areas." The concrete plant is heavy industry, so 12 states, a subdivision with properties of less than two acres, needs a central sanitary sewer system, but Pasco is allowing septic tanks and wells. Crossbar Well Field over four months has pumped on average 20 million gallons of water per day. A concrete plant is not compatible. Okay, we may have pollution. There is no fire alarm, air alarm system out there. The fire department is eight miles away. Through Friedland's various businesses, he generously donates to commissioners. Do we ever stand a chance? And where is Pasco's protection from the impacts to the opera, our wells, the pollution, the noise, and traffic? This may be business as usual for Dr. James P. Gilz Jr. and Friedland, but we want the same protection and peace they have at their homes. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, no one else to speak on this. So Barbara, would you like to respond?
So yes, we had a notice letter that went out with the comp plan that noticed the date of the MPUD before this body, that we overlooked, that we noticed this MPUD with the zoning, the MPUD dates changed. We overlooked that. We did send out notice of this hearing to everybody as required with the, with the dates. That's what happened. And I think Steph ended up continuing it that day, walking on and continuing it to today. So apologize for that. Certainly not trying to do anything wrong or hide anything, and it was, we were noticed for today. Crossbar Well Field is on our west, and I will bring up Gary from ECT. He answered this question before, and Ms. Schatzman heard the answer, but she is still citing the same things. So we'll have him repeat the answer with regard to the proximity to the well fields, the protection zones. A lot of people like to stand up and cite comp plan to you, but comp plans are implemented in codes. In this comp plan policy, you have a groundwater protection ordinance, which Gary's going to explain to you how that, what that ordinance shows as far as mapping of that well field relative to this property. And with regard to water and sewer, the utilities department has advised that the nearest, nearest water and sewer are more than 1.5 miles away, with water being four miles and sewer being 2.7 miles, which exceeds the distance to require us to hook up in the comprehensive plan under Table 10-1. Let me, I didn't hear anything else I needed to respond to. A lot of it was, was personal attacks against my client and his project across the street, which I don't, have not heard any complaints about that project across the street. Everybody's noticed heavily regarding the blasting over there, when things are going to happen, and we have a really good notice system.
She was referring to a bankruptcy. I don't think, I think that's an adjoining mine.
Yes, Lager Verde is not owned by my client. My client does own Seven, Seven Diamonds Mine, which is adjacent to Lager Verde.
Right.
Let me have Gary explain the well field.
Before you do that, let me just, so, so that everybody who might speak at a future item knows that our timer is set for three minutes. It'll go off in two minutes, just to let you know that there's a minute left. That's what that beep is. So I don't want you to think when the first one goes off that you got to quit talking. So I want to make sure you know that you've got plenty of time. The other thing is, I, I just want to say this because, you know, she, her comments, when you make a personal attack against people, it doesn't help your position at all. And so let's And so let's try to stick to the facts. And she, she, I don't know, she left, so she didn't want to hear what you had to say, I guess. But let's try to do that, you know, just respect each other, okay? So thank you very much. If you want to come forward, give us your name and address and, and you've been sworn, right?
Yes, my name is Gary Ubelar. I'm a principal engineer with Environmental Consulting and Technology. Address is 1408 Northwest Shore Boulevard in Tampa, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
There are two responses or two answers to her comment or question. First is that it's well documented that the direction of groundwater flow beneath the well field and the Commerce Park is to the west or to the coast. And so the Commerce Park location would not naturally flow towards the well field. Just the opposite would occur. So as a result, the potential for the Commerce Park to cause issues with the well field is contrary to, to the knowledge of, of the science of how the aquifer works. This is demonstrated and supported by not only your comp plan, but your groundwater ordinance that, that provides wellhead protection zones around each well in the well field that restricts uses and is designed to protect each of those, each of those individual wells. And those zones extend outward depending on, again, the groundwater flow. And so they're not just a circle, they're kind of oblong shaped features. And the Seven Diamonds Park is located well west of any of those protection zones. So, you know, that says that staff in concert with water management district staff have looked at the well field and have mapped where protection is necessary and determined that this site is beyond those protection zones. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions?
Do you have a sense of, just out of curiosity, what your consultative use is going to be under, you know, what's proposed there from your past experience on other sites?
Um, it would depend on the mix of uses, actually.
But, but you're talking about a concrete batch plan or something like that? So just generally based on your, your experience and?
It would, you know, it'd be on the order of a million gallons a day.
Okay.
Something like that.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Hmm.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think she was raising her hand to speak.
Pardon me?
I don't, are you raising your hand to speak?
You wanted to speak? Okay, well, you should have come up.
Talking.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We, we just, what we do normally is we, you know, invite the applicant up to speak, give their presentation, then anybody who has concerns, like you, might, maybe, would come up and state those, and then they'd have a chance to respond. So we're going out of order here a little bit, but that's okay. We can work with it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I just need your name and address and, and if you've been sworn.
I'm Mary Kornitas, 15515 Waxweed in Spring Hill, Pasco County.
And you've been sworn?
Um, what does that mean?
Did you stand and swear?
Back there or? I could do it right now.
Did you stand and raise your right hand?
I don't think she's been sworn.
Okay, so what would you like me to do?
So let's get sworn then.
Okay, sure.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give as the truth self you got?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Thank you. And I appreciate you all allowing a forum for the citizens to speak. So I'm on behalf of some of the residents in my community in the, in the, in regards to, they, she asked me to say that we request that they cease and desist the continued plans to build with the lack of infrastructure. This is in regards to the wells that are drying up in Zephyr Hills. They are no longer in a position to continue building without providing the sufficient ways to accommodate the necessary infrastructure prior to all that they are bringing into the county. I also wanted to bring up, I'm reading a book. I, I actually read four books about the environment. And I'm a conservative, but I really believe that we need to pay attention to what's happening to our environment, especially here, you know, in Florida. And I'm really reading a great book by Jeff Goodall called The Heat Will Kill You First. So, and I'm concerned about our future generations in Florida if it will be a habitable place due to our, you know, the continued trees that we're cutting down, how we're affecting our water sources and the heat and things like that. So it does mention Pasco County in this book, which had me a little alarmed. And, you know, the, you know, the reality of all the growth here and, and what are we doing to protect our water sources, you know? And, and, you know, just the environment in general, it's a scary thing. And I think it's something we, regardless of our, of our ambitions or political opinions and things like that, I, I think it's just something that we really need to put, you know, in the forefront. Secondly, how many people in Pasco County have died of a heat emergency this, this year? Those are statistics that are important for us to consider, okay? We need to pay attention to this as responsible citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think you do need to give the applicant a chance to rebut again.
Barbara?
If she wants to.
I don't have anything necessarily to say, but we're still available if you all have any questions.
So Barbara, I do have a question for you or Amy. Condition 24, this may just be a typo numbering issue, but it says, "In lieu of conditions 24 through 27, the project may be served by well and septic." Is that supposed to say in lieu of conditions 25 through 27 or 25 through?
Looks like a typo. Looks like we added something and shifted everything down.
Utility plan if they're going to do well and septic.
I'm not sure what it's supposed to say, but I don't think it should say 20 through 27 because that is.
No, it should say 25 to 27.
It should say 25 to 27?
25 or 28.
Well, 28.
28.
Let's see, hold on.
Well, 28 only.
28.
No, 28 wouldn't have.
It's 28, yeah.
Applying, or providing water and, or reclaim water. So, so it probably should say 25 through 28?
25 to 28, yes. We must have added a condition and it shifted. Thank you for catching that. We can certainly fix that. Nope, fixed. Thank you, David.
All right. Have you have any questions for, for the, okay? All right, thank you. If not, there's no one else to speak? If not, can I air a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
As I said before, I think this is a great project in an area that really needs it, so I'm fully in support of it.
It includes the change of the condition numbers for.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Can we have a second?
Yes.
Any further discussion of the motion?
I was going to say, for what it's worth, we, we do consider the environment in a lot of these projects. And there's a lot of, you know, John can speak. He's, he's forgotten more than I'll ever know about stormwater treatment and, and its impacts on the environment and so forth. So there's, there's a lot of things that we have to do when we approve the, or when these projects get approved, that the developer has to do to make sure that the impact on the environment is negligible. So it's something we definitely do look at. So your, your concerns are not unheard.
I'm, I'm actually an environmental geologist. I'll be happy to, if you stay after the meeting, I'll be happy to speak with you too separately. You're welcome.
And I'd just like to say, as the project evolves, I do hope that they utilize the rail. I think if we want industrial jobs in the country, that having access to rail is important. And I'm still very pleased with the location of this project and proximity to the rail.
Agreed.
Okay, no other comments? I have a motion. We have a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose like sign. Okay.
Mr. Chair, can we, can we try to go back to item PC 6 and do a sound check with Ms. Hartley?
Sure. DJ mic check. Catherine, is it Catherine? Yeah. Catherine, are you there? You're muted. Heard something?
Yep. Oh, that's.
Oh. Do it the old fashioned way with the phone.
Any luck?
So she's trying to use the phone and the thing, so she needs to unmute, you need to unmute her, I think, as the.
Okay, let's unmute her.
Please, ma'am, sorry.
Sure.
My client for P-8 has a sick grandchild in the hospital. Could we hear P-8 before you do your land development code?
Yeah, of course.
I'm sorry, Steph.
Yeah, we're still having trouble, so.
Can we do, still do a sound check, please?
Yeah.
Just to make sure we don't have that problem when we finish AP-8. Can you unmute yourself on the phone?
Is your phone unmuted?
If she's also the call-in user, that phone is still muted.
There you go. Can you hear me now?
There we go.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
As you've heard, we are moving.
It gave me directions to, to star six, so I think we're okay now.
Okay. All right, let's roll.
All right.
Okay, Ms. Hartley, can you please?
Thank you, your patient.
Can you please hold tight because we're going to actually go to item AP-8 first?
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Don't touch that button.
Good afternoon, Tammy Snyder, Planning and Development. All right, we have for you the Beacon Woods East MPUD, PDD 247742. Proposed as a zoning amendment from an MPUD to an MPUD to amend the master plan and conditions of approval to set forth additional passive uses that may occur in specific golf course areas and to include maintenance requirements of those areas. The site is located in western Pasco County. Here's the location map. Current zoning districts, subject parcels are MPUD. They're surrounded by a mix of general, commercial, professional, office, PUDs and MPUDs and various types of residential districts. Context map shows you the Bayonne Point Regional Medical Center, Veterans Park, some schools, Hudson Regional Library. Here's the master plan. Most of this has been built out. The conditions of approval were revised to include specific passive uses such as neighborhood parks to include walking trails, unlit open play areas, tot lots, playgrounds and recreational courts, and potentially an entrance road, utilities, floodplain compensation and drainage. Additionally, maintenance requirements state that grass shall be no taller than eight inches and bona fide agricultural uses are prohibited. So while they may plant trees and such, there shall be no actual harvesting. With that, the PDD recommends approval with conditions to the Board of County Commissioners.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for, for Tammy? Any questions? No? Okay. The applicant present?
For the record, again, Barbara Willhite, 6327 Graham Boulevard. I did pass out to you a, this, this picture here, this exhibit.
You have a motion to receive and file?
Thank you.
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is the exhibit that goes with condition 35. Just like my prior matter, I have the most unusual zoning conditions. This is most unusual condition day. Condition 35 through 39 are what's different. This is obviously a very old MPUD and so nothing else was really revised other than these conditions. So in 35, it talks about, prior to recording the first plat, any areas labeled as golf course, neighborhood park and so on will go to, will be conveyed to the applicable homeowners associations if they want them. And the areas that you can see here, the applicable homeowners association, we have areas that are in like a purple, that's the estates. And then across Little Road, there is another area, fairways, and that's in the yellow. Just to kind of orient you, I'm not sure who's going to speak. We sent out 742 notices with maps like this in our proposed site plan. We received one call. So I wanted to just orient you to this in relative to what your, your comments may, the comments may be from the public. I'd like to listen to the comments and then address anything, if I may.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I want to mention too, I did have an ex parte with Ms. Elmer and Ms. Willhite late last week. So it didn't make it into ex parte's, but I did speak with them.
And I think Tammy, you gave those to the clerk, yes. Our office was made aware that a couple of the ex partes didn't make it into the packet and the clerk has them now.
Okay, thank you.
So Barbara, just to sum up the request, your client is developing the area in pink, I guess it's pink, whatever color that is.
The two shades of pink.
Yes. But that will be exclusively neighborhood or passive uses. Is that right?
Correct. So let me, let me go over that. So in the, the more pink of the pinks, that property is already zoned R4. So those, that zoning district allows 60 by 120 lots. In the lighter pink area, my client will do, is limited to neighborhood park, floodplain compensation, drainage. They will have an entrance road off of Hudson and then utilities. And so those are the uses that would, will be allowed in that, for this project in the lighter pink. And then the other areas, if the HOAs would like the other areas, my client has the ability to convey those areas to them so that they can control them. The purpleish blue being the estates, which I understand there's representatives here to tell you that they do want those areas. And then there's the fairways, which we have not heard from, one way or another, as to what their intentions are.
Okay.
What's, you said zoned R4. What's the effective density going to be for the, that darker of the two pinks?
Say that again?
Do you know, do you know what the final density is going to be on the?
I have the engineer, Greg Winger from.
I'm assuming it's under four, but I'm just, I was just curious.
They are, I, the most I know is that they're 60 by 120 lots because I know the zoning district, but.
Gotcha.
Greg can tell us.
Okay. You have a questions for Barbara before she says?
So Barbara, just to be clear, so regardless of who owns what, the, the permitted uses are the same, which is they have to be either neighborhood park or passive floodplain compensation drainage areas? I'm talking about outside of the R4 area?
True. And then those areas are further limited to walking trails. The neighborhood parks are further defined, walking trails, unlit play areas, tot lots, playgrounds, recreational courts, picnic tables and fences. So this, actually for the areas that are outside of what my client's developing, these conditions actually provide more clarity to what, what the existing MPUD just says, golf course areas, it doesn't, in, in not defined what that is allowed.
And they have the same maintenance standard, which the grass can't exceed eight inches in height?
Same maintenance standard. There's no maintenance standard in those, in the current MPUD conditions.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Barbara.
And Barbara, if, if the associations elect not to want to be gifted these properties, what happens with them?
They'll remain with the current owner, the Lowman family.
But these conditions, the way they're written, still apply?
That's the way I read them. I think that was the intent of the county. Most of these conditions were written, I wrote 35. And I think I participated in 36 and some of the other ones were the county wrote them.
And can one of the HOAs take and the other not?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I hope they do take it. I've done a lot of, I've been here a long time and I can name off what's happened to other defunct golf courses. The county owns Timber Oaks, the county owns Magnolia Valley, the county owns Gulf Harbors. And in Quail Hollow, we have houses on that golf course now. So this is quite an opportunity that I have never seen in all my years for the homeowners to be able to control this property and, and for the homeowners that are on these properties to kind of control what's in their backyard. So I hope, you know, my client has, has, has really nothing to do with the zoning and the development of this property, but he wanted to come up with a solution to a problem that's been a problem for the county and these residents. And that's what we set out to do and. a problem for the county and these residents, and that's what we set out to do, and, and that's why I wrote condition 35.
But to answer your question, Mr. Jorgi, condition 39 basically says, regardless of who owns it, they still have the same permitted uses, same maintenance standard.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Greg Wagoner, Coastal Design Consultants, 7026 Little Road, have been sworn. What was the question, how many units are in the R4 area?
Oh, was it density, yeah. What's the effective density gonna be?
I believe we're at 218 units.
Okay, so how many acres is that, that's what?
I believe it was 101, I believe.
Okay. Yeah, so, yeah, so, a little over two units per acre, something like that.
They're luxury lots by today's standards.
They are.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Greg?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, for anybody who would like to speak on this issue or ask questions, please come forward.
Mr. Chair, should I go through the list?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna call your name off the list, so just come on up, sit up here close, so you don't have so far to walk.
So on the list we have Jack Brummett, followed by Joe Sears, followed by Jeff Baumgartner, I think, and followed by someone by the last name of Alvarez, I think the first name is I.
Okay. Jack, if you'll give us your name and address, and I know you've been sworn.
My name is Jack Brummett. I live at 8542 Coral Creek Loop in Hudson, Florida, and I am the president of our homeowners association representing 480 homes. Our group is in favor of moving forward with this development. There was some question about whether or not our people were supportive of that. We had a meeting on January the 21st of this year, and 87% of our people voted affirmative to move forward with this project and accept the land that has been offered to us, about 25 acres containing five fairways of the old golf course. They are enthused, this is the biggest participation in voting that we've ever had in the history of our community, and people are anxious to get started with this. As a president, I get more questions regarding when, when do we get to start? When do we get to take over? When can we start taking care of our new property? And we are anxious to do that. We have no problem with the plans that you've put forth. The entrance is least offensive to us where it is, the extension of Library Road. We have gone over and over these plans, we have communicated with our community, they know exactly what is a state, and I, I've been here for 24 years, and I've never seen a community, our community, ever pull together in unison for one project that faces us. So I encourage the panel to move forward.
I may have missed it, but which association do you represent again? I'm sorry.
The Estates and Reserve of Beacon Woods Homeowners Association.
Okay, so, looking at our graphic, you're looking, you would be acquiring the blue area on this map?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
To the west of Little Road. You speak at all for the folks that would acquire the yellow area, or no?
No, that's the Fairway Oaks, across the street from the...
You're only speaking for those that would assume...
We're speaking, I'm speaking for the blue, blue team.
Got it.
Blue team.
Back to blue.
Anyhow, I implore you to move this project along, we're anxious to get the job done. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, appreciate that. We know how hard it is, believe me, we know how hard it is to get a consensus. Yes, sir. Give us your name and address, and I know you've been sworn.
Good afternoon, my name is Joe Sears, I live at 13915 Talmage Loop in Hudson, and I am a property owner and live in the reserve, which is a part of the estates, the reserve. It's a little smaller, it's 42 homes, which is adjacent to the development that NVR Ryan Holmes is referring to as the enclave of Beacon Woods. First, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission. I've only been a resident here for about, about 12 years in Florida, but I know how hard it is as Planning Commission members, and just want to let you know that thank you, and we do appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
Our current home is our, is our ninth across five states, two of which are located in Pasco County. We are in support, my wife and I are in great support of this project moving forward, and which includes the road modification requested by Ryan. One concern we do have, though however, would be the potential removal of the 50,000 trees, pine trees that have been planted, and the environment, positive environmental impact that they have already made. This modification, as, as planned, will architecturally complement the existing homes in the area. We also believe it is the best option for easing congestion and optimizing traffic flow to, for, for these homes. And most importantly, is the best option for resident safety and emergency response vehicles and personnel. As a community, we have seen this change coming when sadly the course closed April 22nd, 2019. I personally enjoyed golf there. Due to declining interest, the course became less profitable, and closed in part due to lack of support from our community HOA leaders. Jack wasn't in charge at the time, now he is. At that time, the current tree farm owner operated the golf course, and over 50,000 evergreen trees were planted on the property by the owner in 2020. Our community has worked hard with the owner to maintain the trees, which now, four years later, served not only as a traffic and sound and site barrier, but prop, but property value enhancement due to these trees on Hudson Avenue. These are 12-foot evergreen trees, if you take a look at them, if you ever get a chance to come out there, it looks like we live in a forest. We believe that our home values have improved in part due to the aesthetics of the well-maintained prime forest. And we, as homeowners, have actually spent over 1,000 hours working on this area. Our HOA leaders asked homeowners to vote their preference on January 21st. The gift to accept the property was enthusiastically passed by residents. We comprise a total of 480 homes. In closing, we urge you to approve this road modification and others' concern though exists about the removal of the trees. It is the best traffic option for safe access in and out of our new homes to be built adjacent to our neighborhood. Respectfully, Joe Sears.
Thank you, Mr. Sears.
Thank you.
I believe there is a provision in this agreement that prevents the harvesting of the trees, isn't that right?
It prevents them being used, yes, for agricultural purposes, so that wouldn't include harvesting.
Right.
But there's nothing preventing the trees from staying there.
Right. So if that answers that part of your concern...
I do have a question, David, about that, about question 38, and that has to do within the first sentence, the word "may" be allowed versus "shall be allowed."
Give me a second. Sorry, gotta pull it up. Okay, I see the sentence. Are you suggesting it should be "shall"?
I'm, well, I'm curious about why the word "may" would be, "shall" means you can have the trees, "may" means we might, or might not let you have the trees, or could infer that, not necessarily by those that are here, but by someone in the future, would be more my concern.
I, in the context of the overall condition, I don't think it's materially different, but I'm okay if, if you want to make it say "shall," I don't think...
I'm asking your legal opinion, that's all.
I think it's fine, it's "shall," I don't know that it, because it's permissive, because it's "shall be allowed," so it's, it's allowed. We're not saying it's required, we're saying it's allowed. So I'm not sure it makes a difference whether it says "may be allowed" or "shall be allowed," either way it's...
I'd be concerned that it may not be allowed, but who decides "may?"
So, so, I would be fine with changing "may" to "shall," Tammy, do you have any issue with that?
No issue.
Okay.
With the "can't have it," Barbara?
No issue.
Okay. So, to me, the bigger issue, or the bigger mandate of condition 38 is that what can't happen anymore is it's, be har, the trees be harvested, because there's a prohibition on...
Yes, and that uses the word "shall."
Or "shall be prohibited," so that...
You can't...
That's the real mandate of that condition.
Can't cut down the trees and harvest them.
Can't harvest the trees.
No matter who owns it.
Right, so, but to your point, the first sentence, I think it's fine with "shall," so, okay.
Okay, who's on the, who's next on the hit list?
The person's first name is Jeff.
Welcome, Jeff.
My name's Jeff Baumgartner, I live at 7612 Sylvan Drive in Hudson. I have, I have watched...
You've been sworn. Jeff, I'm sorry.
This whole thing from the very beginning, from when...
Jeff? Yeah, you, I'm just checking, you've been sworn, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
From when it was a golf course to being closed and watching the weeds, and then seeing all these little trees put in, which was not impressive at first, but it became very impressive, it's beautiful. Of all, you know, Ryman Homes' plan, to still have green space, build these homes, is, it's perfect. When you look at all the other developments that I see in, in western part of Pasco County and Hudson, there's not gonna be a development, it's beautiful. Most of these developments, as you guys have approved, are just a bunch of houses, nothing to do. We've got a lot of young people, I have kids that like to move to the area, that when, when the children are growing up, when you have nature, you don't just have houses, you have bicycle paths, you can go, you know, play in the woods, see the trees, really, you know, feel what life is all about. It's not all about bricks and mortar, and what they've done, I didn't realize what they did when they planted those trees, it's become so beautiful. Drive paths, I go down Hudson Avenue, where all these people work so hard to maintain and mow between them, it's just like, please don't, don't get rid of the trees, other, other than where, you know, needs be for the roads and the development and the MPUD, but where would you want to live? You want to live where it's just all bricks and mortar? You want to live in a beautiful place where the kids can go play in the park? You know, it's just, it's gonna be a whole different feel of a development, other than anything we know of in Hudson in the last couple of years.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chair, the last person on the list is someone by the last name of Alvarez.
Mr. Alvarez, welcome. And Mr. Alvarez, I noticed you were in the back, were you able to be sworn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Alvarez, and I live at 9218 Water Hazard Drive, and I'm here by myself, I'm a homeowner.
Which development is that?
Fairway Oaks.
Fairway Oaks, okay.
The other...
You're the yellow area.
If it's yellow or blue or whatever.
You're to the east of Little Road, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not a trick question. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, I, like I said, I'm just here by myself as a, as a homeowner, and I see, and so I've heard the comments just made now, so I'm gonna try and provide a little balance, for myself at least. And so, not necessarily against the rezoning, or whatever that's called, from golf course to golf course plus, okay, which is what I read in the documentation, and, and so we're into the plus side now, because we're not affected, Fairway Oaks is not affected by the, the, the homes that will be built, okay? It's, it's the plus side, whether it becomes playground or whatever. And I heard the other person speak, and we're all, you know, taken positively, okay? But we've had no maintenance, at all. My house is right there, I got pine trees, I can't go out there if I have, with my children, I can't go out. There's been no upkeep, no, nothing, nothing at all, and you just need to go there. And we were told not to go there because we don't own the property, okay? So, who knows what condition it really is in? But let me also say, and I'm jumping around now, I had prepared a certain outline, but I'm jumping around, that the, the person mentioned some dates, so I may be off a little bit, but all I remember was, one day it was a golf course, and the next day there was a whole bunch of trees, okay? And so my, I could be wrong, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but the trees were planted while it was a golf course. So, my feeling, so I'm gonna go fast now, because I think I have a minute, my feeling is that at a minimum, at a minimum, there needs to be, I was gonna say, the trees need to be removed, at a minimum, okay? Because I just don't know what's back there. Hearing the other folks talk, who seem to love the trees, I, I don't care for them at all, if I'm gonna build a playground, it should be a proper playground, not children running around in a forest, okay? I don't know what that means. And the conditions are not good. I know that because I go back there, and I see it when I prune my bushes and, and so on, so there's all kinds of things living back there. So that's my point, okay? I don't necessarily mind the rezoning, and, and again, I'm speaking for myself, I think that there needs to be proper evaluation of the space before we decide the trees can stay or not, and, and that's just, I'm not talking only of trees, I don't know what else is back there. So beyond the trees, to make it proper for playgrounds to be put in, because we don't have any playgrounds right now, there's not. So that's it.
Do you represent the HOA, or are you representing yourself?
No, I'm just here by myself. I, although I'm happy to help, get involved, whatever the discussion is with either other HOAs, or with whoever, I, I'm, I'm happy to help.
Have you, have you, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I understand your concern, but it seems to me that your opportunity to have control over this property is here and now.
And that's why I'm here, yeah, and I'm, I'm, sorry.
I know, I realize you can't speak for the HOA in general, but the opportunity's here and now, and I would hate to see it be a missed opportunity. There's nothing, and David, maybe I'll, we'll go back to the conditions about this, let's suppose that this group decided that it was in their best interest, and personally, I think it is, to take over this defunct golf course while you have the opportunity, so that you can create a playground, if that's what you want to do.
I agree.
And if you think the trees need to go, would those conditions prevent them from clearing trees to create a playground or a tot lot or whatever?
Not if they're building a neighborhood park, because a neighborhood park is a permitted use in that area, so...
All right.
What it prevents, what it prevents is the harvesting of trees, so...
As a prop.
Just, in other words, removing trees for the sole sake of, for the sole purpose of harvesting and selling them.
Well, that's interesting, because, not to be overly argumentative, when my clients, contractors clear their sites, if there are a lot of pine trees, oftentimes they do get sold for fence posts, lumber, or pulp. So that's, that's a possibility.
Well, I mean, the prohibition is on...
I understand they're not gonna run it as an ag, yes.
Basically a tree farm, okay? But if they're clearing it for a playground, they could still sell it for timber. I could say that's probably what Barbara's client's going to do.
I think the point I'm trying to make to the gentleman is...
Is they're probably going to clear it for a playground.
Is that your opportunity to, your HOA's opportunity to decide whether or not is here and now, and this is an oppor, this is a window of opportunity... this is an oppor- this is a window of opportunity that's not going to stay open forever. And so you, your group needs to make a decision, and based upon the county attorney's comments, if you feel you need to remove some trees to create a playground for the children, or whatever the case may be, you've got the license to do it. I'd also note in our, the county's own tree ordinance, pine trees are exempt, so you can take them out with no penalty. But you, the window of opportunity is closing. Guys, the HOA needs to make a decision, I realize that's beyond your power, but...
I don't know why they're not here, I, I...
Have you spoken to whoever the leaders of the HOA are?
We were supposed to have a meeting in September, whatever, and then it was moved to October nineteen today, right?
Oh.
Right?
Is, is it supposed to be tonight, you mean the H O A meeting?
No, 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 sorry, sorry, sorry. This, this, this
This meeting.
Is a postponement of something that was supposed to happen in September.
I think what we're trying to say is that you need to probably contact your leadership of the HOA and tell them that this is your opportunity to take ownership of that section of land, and then you can make decisions about what you want to do with it.
Once, once this
If you don't, if you don't take ownership of it, it's going to stay like it is, and you're never going to be able to change it.
Even though there are conditions that say the grass has to be maintained eight inches high, you know, they may let it grow to twenty inches high, and code enforcement can come out and cite them twenty-nine times before somebody ever comes out and knows it, and it's three feet high.
Please go there now, it is already at that, it is already in that state if not worse.
You guys have the power to control all of this right now, it...
Yeah, you should communicate with the other HOAs, because they can probably give you advice, they've, they've been through this, so. Should check with them, you know, work together.
Appreciate it. How much time do we have?
Your time is up about five minutes ago.
The window of opportunity.
Well, if we pass this, then you're going to have to make a decision, your, your HOA is going to have to make a decision, pretty quick.
In short order.
Yeah.
David, just, just to clarify on this, but Barbara's client has no obligation currently to clear the trees for...
No.
There was a previous condition that required removal, but that's been eliminated, correct?
There was some discussion of a condition that would have required removal, but staff did not support that condition.
Okay.
I don't think staff wants to create a precedent where the county is forcing the removal.
Which is probably where some of these comments are coming from.
Where, where staff is forcing the removal of trees, so.
Which is even one reason...
When the applicant comes back up...
Normally we're requiring the planting of trees, so.
When the applicant comes back up, she'll speak to the time period that you have to make a decision, okay?
Sorry, I didn't get the last part.
When she comes back up, we'll ask her to let us know what the time period is.
For this window of, okay, appreciate it very much.
There was a lady in the back.
Uh, we can only take you once, I'm sorry, Jack, you know, was, if there's anything important, if there's something that, uh, you want conveyed, and somebody else is going to speak, you can ask them to bring it up for you.
I just wanted to say, we want the trees, everybody wants them.
Uh, well, yeah, that's clear, we're clear, we clearly know that, yeah.
Well, wait, they want the trees.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I think there's one other person in the back yet that wanted to...
Yeah, somebody in the back that wanted to speak.
Oh, there is?
Yes, she stood up.
There's one other person that wants to speak? Yeah. Step forward or forever hold your peace.
Hello, I wasn't going to speak, I'm not sworn in.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give as the truth self-evident?
Yes. My name is Annette Pellicano. I spoke to Jack several times.
What's your address, I'm sorry?
Ninety-two sixty-nine Water Hazard.
Okay.
I am on the board of the HOA in Fairway Oaks.
Oh, good.
Oh, excellent.
Thank you.
Just as a, not an officer, but a board member. I don't know what it means yet, but I'm learning. We want... I don't know what decisions they're going to make on this, we just needed the timeframe, because they're telling our community, the rest of my board is telling the community, it's going to be in two, three years, so we don't have to make a decision whether or not we're going to take the property. I just want to know if that's correct.
I would think that if this rezoning is passed, they'll immediately file for all of the development permits they need to commence construction. That could happen in as short as four to six months.
That's my, my impression.
I have no idea, though, when they close on this property, and that's the trigger for when something would be conveyed to an HOA, so I...
Well, the trigger, to be clear, the deadline in condition thirty-five is before, basically before Barbara's client records the first plat of that area.
I understand, I'm talking about their private real estate contract, so the, the developers purchasing this from the Lowman family, and at that, at that point, that's when title to land is going to pass, whenever they close. And I don't, I don't know when that's going to happen.
I don't disagree, but Lowman could in theory convey it to the HOA. He could close with Barbara's client, and then after the fact, convey it to the HOA, which he may be motivated to do, because I don't know that he wants to maintain the yellow area and mow it to eat, you know...
Well, he isn't maintaining the yellow area.
Well, that's my point, is that, my point is that he may in fact...
Well, it's his property, he should keep it.
Well, so...
Once it's only gets approved, he's required to.
If, if this is approved, he will have to maintain the grass to be no more than eight inches in height.
If we take the property.
No, whether, even if he takes the property, he has to at least do that, even if he keeps it under this condition.
So the sooner he conveys it, the sooner he's out from under that requirement.
But if you all take title, and this goes to the discussion we just had with the other gentleman, if you all take title, then you can do other things with the property if you want to, such as making a neighborhood park or use it for other purposes.
Right, I, I understand that. Now, my, the only question is, the trees in the retention ponds? That's the biggest concern, because we have four holds on our side, and the trees were planted in retention ponds, and our biggest fear is that when they do grow to however high they get, it'll affect the water and come into the homes, because there are houses right on the retention pond, and we're afraid that they'll go into the homes. That's my only concern.
So again, if, if your HOA takes control of the property, then you can do something about that.
Well, and...
But I was under the impression at last month's meeting that it was put on the side because there was a, a condition, and I thought that the condition was that the two parties were going to discuss the removal of the trees in the retention ponds only.
So how many trees are in the retention ponds?
I don't know.
I, I've just, maybe a guess, ten, a hundred, a thousand?
Between all the retention ponds, I'll say two fifty.
Okay, so have you spoken with the Southwest Florida Water Management District?
They're not permitted, these aren't permitted ponds, they're areas.
Okay.
We have five permitted ones, we may change...
I, I can't speak with the audience, I'm sorry.
All right, but it was helpful.
Okay.
You can ask him a question, bring him up for questions if you want to. You just can't have him yelling for the audience.
Have you been sworn?
Yes. V. Salerno.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give as the truth self-evident?
I'm V. Salerno, thank you, everyone, from the Planning Commission, especially Tammy Snyder. I'm with the HOA of the Beacon Woods Estates and Reserve of Beacon Woods.
I'm sorry, but what's your address, please?
And I...
Can I have your address, please? Your address, yeah.
Eight-eight-three-four Thoreau, please.
Thank you.
We were concerned about the trees, and especially the trees being in where the lowline areas by the culverts and by the stormwater. I personally talked and was with Mike Penn of the Florida Forest Service, he came to my house, came to my golf cart, and we rode around all the areas, not in Fairway Oaks, but the areas of the estates. And he assured me that the trees were not a hazard as far as water, and it was just the opposite. He thought it was, it was, it was positive. He said it was, it was a good thing, it wasn't a deterrent. So, I can, that, to me, that's first-hand knowledge. Because I would not, we were concerned about the trees and, and the safety and all that, and he, he thought it was, they were okay.
Great, great, good question.
Well, I was just going to ask Tammy, has our stormwater department formulated an opinion on this issue?
And your microphones aren't very good, so I can't hear you.
So can I get Ms. Ty- Snyder to...
I'm sorry.
So my question, I'm asking our staff
Okay.
whether our stormwater folks have looked at this issue and formulated an opinion, so. That's what she's about to say.
Tammy Snyder, Planning and Development, yes, they have, our stormwater folks have been out there, and they said that there were no issues with the ponds or the trees within.
Okay. Well, if they're pine trees, I don't think they're going to live in standing water anyway, so.
Can I ask Greg a question related to that?
Greg?
Greg, have you seen the trees that are planted in these ponds?
I drove through, they were probably six, nine months ago, I guess, sure.
Okay, so I understand these were seedlings, and now they're however many years old. When the trees are mature, is there enough tree mass that it might create some substantive reduction of storage, storage volume?
I don't believe so.
All right, that's what I needed to know.
It's, no. And as was mentioned, if it is real wet, the pines aren't going to live.
That's my thinking, too, is that they're not going to make it anyway. They're going to rot.
It'll be a self-destructive and, uh...
Yes.
Situation.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. All right, so, uh, Barbara, is there anything else from your end?
I would just go over the timing issue that you all were discussing. The opportunity for the HOAs, they have until we, my client closes on the property. My client has control of all of the property, the pink, the blue, and the yellow, under its contract. And so at closing, if the HOAs want the property, they'll be conveyed at closing to those HOAs. And if they don't, at the closing table, they'll stay with, with the seller. We, our contractual obligation is to close when we have construction plan approval, when we have our permits. As Mr. Moody said, his timeline's pretty good, um, next summer is generally, you know, when we're thinking earliest. Um, we got to get the plans in, the construction plans in. We've had our preliminary plan done for a year or so, I was sitting waiting for staff to approve it, but we've been going through this process.
So this could actually happen faster.
It's just a preliminary plan, it's not simultaneous, so.
Oh, I see.
We still got to do the construction plans, but the preliminary plan, part of it's ready to be approved a year ago. We actually have to wa- we just had to waive the statute, one hundred and twenty days, because we're still doing this, so. Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
You're happy with the conditions as they were? Any other issues you have with the conditions?
We have, we, we're fine with the conditions.
Okay.
Barbara, just to, so I'm clear, the Lowman's also okay, I think you realize you represent the buyer, but the current owner is also okay with these conditions?
I don't know, as I mentioned to you guys, I don't even know Mr. Lowman, so I don't know.
Well, they're, they're in the contract, right?
They're, I'm sorry, was that?
They're in the contract with Lowman's and...
Yes, my client has a, is under contract with the Lowman's to buy.
And to convey these properties, right.
Yeah, I don't do their transactional work, so I don't know exactly what their contract says.
Well, I mean, the only reason I'm asking the question is if you mentioned that for some reason that the HOA doesn't take it, that Lowman will retain ownership, which then means he's bound by these conditions, the maintenance condition. Between now and the board meeting, can somebody just make sure that he understands that, that that he will be bound by that condition if he's...
Yes.
Tammy, you can do that.
Actually, yeah, probably be better for the county to do it than, because I don't represent them, but...
Right. And I would hope...
Tammy's saying yes over there.
Okay.
That the HOA understands that even though Mr. Lowman or the, the family or whatever will be bound by the conditions, there's nothing that prevents them from coming in here just like this application and requesting some modification to the condition or some other future owner. So for the HOA, your chance to control it without risk of something else happening is here and now. So I hope you'll heed that advice.
Well, I do agree with you, and, or if they want to make it a park, or if they want it to be anything other than, if they want to control their destiny of what's happening behind them, I would agree with you, that taking ownership would be the best.
Next couple of months is their window.
Yeah, development standards today, you'd be hard pressed to find a developer that was willing to not have something right up against the back of another house, just the way the, the properties lay out. I mean, in this layout, I mean, y- you're almost guaranteeing yourself open space behind all these houses that used to back up to, and, and the community was designed at the time to maximize the frontage of the golf course. But now you've really maximized the frontage to open space and minimize the things that are behind you, so there's a lot of wins for the, the HOA.
No, you'll, it's, it's going to be obvious, it'd be great if the HOA would engage with my client, they could talk directly, but for some reason, that's not happening, so I would, I would reach out and say, please, you, you, my client is here, and they're willing to talk to you. We actually offered to meet, but we heard back from Commissioner Mariano's office that nobody wanted to meet with us, so. But we, we, we would be happy to, to talk to anybody, you know how I do this, um, and we can have those direct conversations, so there's not misinformation, but the window will close sometime next summer.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay. All right.
It's definitely worth mentioning that, uh, you know, this property is being, uh, offered to be conveyed for free to the HOAs, so. That's, that doesn't come around too often either, for, for a property owner, for a developer to convey it for, for free for their, them to control their destiny, so. Hope the HOAs, well, I know one HOA is on board, so I hope the other one does as well.
I'd just like to offer my, uh, congratulations to Ryan Holmes for taking this step. I know this is a, a big step forward for, for them. This is not something that you're normally going to get from a developer, so, um, I think they've really done a good job here, made a good, a great gesture, and I think you're going to enjoy, uh, having them to work with over, over the period of time that they're developing. So one, their representative is here, Mrs. Elmer, and, uh, great job. Yeah, and Barbara, of course. I'm sorry, but I only get one bite at the apple, Mr. Alvarez.
Oh.
Sorry.
But we can't keep bringing people up, the same people up all the time, so. And you can't talk from the back. Would anybody like to talk to Mr. Alvarez?
Well, there's maintenance, but the property costs.
Mr. Alvarez. I, I, you know, I gave you about maybe five minutes instead of three, so. I, I'm trying to be as fair as I can. So if we don't have any other questions or, or concerns, then, uh, let's have a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the conditions.
So is that include the change to condition thirty-eight, changing may to shall?
Uh, yes. Everybody seems to be in agreement to that, so we'll change that one word to shall on condition thirty-eight.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I will second, and I, it's ditto what, what Chuck said, I think this is a fantastic job by Ryan actually doing this, this is great for the, for the homeowners, that, that the, the folks in these states understand it and the value of it, so, I think it's a, it's a great one-win for everyone.
Yeah. Yeah, and thank you for coming, showing your support, Jack, and...
We don't often get groups to come out and support a neighbor of a development.
Pleasant experience, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Okay, motion carries. All right, we have some more business to do.
Yes, we've got item PC six, and hopefully Ms. Hartley can join us.
Okay. Ms. Hartley, are you still with us?
Technical issues be damned.
Well, this calls for...
You'd have one before you talk about parking?
Well, I tell you what, do I?
Ms. Hartley, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
There you go.
Okay, there we go.
Now I can't see you, but we can hear you.
That's okay, 'cause you're looking at the presentation, anyway.
Oh, there you are.
Better than me. All right.
Okay.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you for letting me join virtually. It saved me three hours of drive time today, so I really appreciate that. This is, I'm Catherine Hartley. I'm a senior project manager with Benish, and we've been working with the staff and with the horizontal roundtable folks on coming up with the new parking code for you and updated park, updated parking regulations. Next slide. And next slide. Yeah. So, we've been working on this for several months. The first time we presented to the horizontal roundtable was to give folks some options on the direction and where we could go with this. What a lot of communities have done is either get rid of parking minimums and maximums entirely and just let the market decide, or they have done more of a place-based option where they reduce parking in downtowns and in proximity to transit, and so on and so forth. Or they've established maximums. And so, we presented those options to the horizontal roundtable. The consensus was go for maximums. And then, the staff met one-on-one with each of the commissioners to give them the same options, and the consensus with them also was to establish maximums, so that's what we have done. And then we took the draft back to the horizontal roundtable for their review and comment. Next slide. So, parking really is, is not just a technical calculation, it's actually a, a policy decision, because it's one of the things that really impacts the urban form of a place, right? When you have massive amounts of parkings with every, with every use, it spreads things out, it makes it less walkable, and so on and so forth. Next slide. When you take a look at the average size of a parking space, when you look at just the space itself, plus half of the drive aisle, it comes out to about 333 square feet or so, give or take, depending on the minimum size of a standard space. But when you require more than three spaces per thousand square feet, you wind up with more parking than building, every time. And that says a lot to the cost, that impacts the design of a place, and so on and so forth. Strong Towns put out an article several years ago that says that the national average for constructing a parking space, including the cost of land, is about $7,500. We pulled some data from RS Means, which is a package that developers can use to estimate construction costs, and it also gives localized labor and material costs. And when we looked at that for 2023, the average space in Tampa Bay is $1,500. But that's not including the cost of land and stormwater attenuation and landscaping and all that stuff. Next slide. So, why are places reforming their parking regulations? Well, lots of reasons. They want to reduce the amount of impervious surface in their city and county. They want to increase land use efficiency, increase the tax base. If you have more buildings and less parking, then obviously you have more taxable value and collect more taxes. You can improve in your connectivity between places, reduce development costs, reduce the vehicle miles traveled, and reduce the environmental impact, and you're getting transit-ready, which we are desperately trying to do in Tampa Bay, right? Next slide. So, there's definitely trade-offs. Less space for building on a site is less development, and less development is less tax base. This is basically the opposite of what I was just saying. Increasing the required construction cost is more, makes development more expensive, and of course, that gets passed on to the consumer, whether it's added on to the cost of your house, or added on to the cost of, the cost of your office space. It just adds to the cost, it gets passed on to the consumer. And it causes spread-out and disconnected development. Next slide. So, this is a very cool website that you can take a look at. It's called the Parking Reform Network, and you can click on each of those dots and see exactly what the local government has done to revise their parking code. So, again, most of them have been eliminating parking entirely and just letting the market decide, but there are some other options, like including maximums and proximity to transit, and so on. Next slide. So, the, again, just to reiterate, the board of county commissioners met one-on-one with the staff, and we gave them those options, and the consensus was to go with maximums. Next slide. So, just to hit the highlights, and then I can answer specific questions in the strikeout and underline. But we kept the single-family detached townhomes and mobile homes standards the same, so there's still a minimum parking amount for those uses. No changes there. Next slide. In most cases, we flipped the minimums to maximums because they were pretty excessive, and you could probably see in the development around, around the county how the parking impacts the design of the place. And so, that's why we did that. We made some adjustments to the community residential homes and allowed for a little bit more there in those circumstances. And for county parks and recreation, we eliminated mixed minimums entirely and did not establish maximums. Those are two of the examples of where we deviated. We, if you have a parking lot that's more than 100 spaces, then you can have 20% of the spaces to be pervious materials, whether it's like turf block or pervious papers, those kinds of examples. We changed the ratio to 50/50 for compact versus regular vehicle. It was set at 75/25. And we added some golf cart and trailer space dimensions. That was a request of the staff. And finally, we took out regulations that apply to public schools, because that's actually controlled by Florida statute, and whatever in our local agreement that you have with the school. Next slide. Readers. So, again, just to reiterate, for single-family and townhomes, this is actually, this is for the bicycle parking. For single-family mobile home, two-family townhomes, and multi-family under 10 units, rather, we did not establish a minimum parking, uh, minimum bicycle parking requirement. So, they're exempt from that. For multi-family, it's one per 10 units for any kind of assembly or recreation. Whatever the, when the planning staff looks at the site plan, they determine what the maximum attendance would be. And then, so you would have to provide 2% of, of the maximum attendance for the bicycle parking spaces.
Can I, can I stop you?
And by the way, a bicycle parking space... Go ahead.
Can I ask you a question? So, how's that work in reality? I mean, are you talking about a bike rack, or are you talking about an actual space?
So, a bike space, and this is actually in the text, if you look at the actual strikeout and underline, one space accommodates two bicycles.
So, are you talking about?
Does that make sense?
What is getting at is, is this out in the part, hard parking area, or is this a bike rack on the sidewalk somewhere?
A bike rack somewhere on the site, and you actually have regulations already in your code that establish where those things have to be. I didn't change those.
Okay, so this can be met, this can be met with a bike rack. It doesn't have to be...
Correct.
A physical space. Okay, I understand that. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. For, uh, let's see, where was I? Oh, for commercial and office, one space per 10,000 square feet. For restaurants and bars and the like, one space per 2,500 square feet. For things like veterinary offices and kennels and things like that, it's .05 spaces per employee. For educational facilities, and I realize after going back through and giving this a read before speaking with you today, I need to edit that to say private educational facilities, because again, the public, uh, public schools are regulated by Florida statute. It's one for 20 students. For any kind of human health services, doctor's office, the dentist, whatever, .05 per employee. And then for industrial uses, none are required. And we took these from the National Bicycle for the ACTA. These are the standards that they recommend, and that's what we went with. Next slide. And I'll take any questions you have on the strikeout and underline at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So, was there any discussion about retrofitting of parking spaces for EV charging? Can I ask the same question when?
No, we...
Go, go ahead.
We can add that if you would like.
Well, so, I've got a question. First off, there's also a proposal to change the definition of auto vehicle service state. You didn't address that, automotive vehicle service and gas stations and convenience stores.
Okay, this may be two different issues, but go ahead, you, you ask your question first, because I think I'm asking about a different issue than what you're asking about.
Well, I'm gonna tie it into that. We're going there.
Okay, well, my question is, if somebody puts in these defined number of spots, and say it's maximum, and then you have, you have minimum widths and lengths, my question is if somebody after the fact wants to add an EV charger or a solar carport or something that generally you would think the county would want to encourage, I want to make sure they're not penalized...
These are maximum parking requirements.
No, but even a maximum, there could be a penalty, because are they gonna, if they, say they put in a solar carport, do they lose those spaces? Do they get, do they get to recruit them?
I know, I mean, if you took out a parking space to make it an EV charger, then you'd be under the maximum.
I understand that, but what if they want to keep their maximum? Like, they wouldn't want to be penalized for, in other words, let's just say they have 80 spaces, they want to put in a solar carport, they lose four spaces because they, for the footers for the solar carport, do they get to make up? Do they still get four more spaces to put? You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, you're asking, you're asking, can they replace those?
Yeah, I wanna, I don't want to see somebody penalized because they've lost spaces due to putting an EV charging station or a solar carport or something that you would think that we'd want to be encouraging. I would hate to see them penalized under the code, and you could have the same problem with a parking space dimension, where you put in an EV charger, now it's below the dimensions, and now are they in violation of our code?
Understood. So, we can make adjustments to the language to accommodate that. I didn't think about the dimensional requirements, and that's a good point, I should have thought that. There is language that we added so that an applicant can come to the county and it gets an administrative approval for adding additional parking spaces, for whatever reason. We can add EVs as a specific condition that would be considered, and then we should go in and add the dimensional requirements, too, and take that into consideration.
Yeah, I don't think you would just limit it to EV. I mean, when I was out west, I saw a number of locations that had solar carports, and I don't think you'd want to...
Right, okay.
You'd want some accommodation for, I haven't seen them in Florida, at least not too much, I think maybe one or two places. But my point is, if they're putting that in, I don't, wouldn't want to penalize, see them penalized under our code.
I can add that under the, let me find the section number.
You make the presumption that it's gonna pass.
I don't know if it's going to pass. My point is that if it does, I don't want to see somebody penalized for putting in that infrastructure.
Can we ask some questions?
Right.
Let's make sure she's down with the presentation.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna, first, you can question this all you want, and I just wanted to ask that one question, and then you, then you can take over, John. So, but you have a way of addressing that, then?
So, we can add under section F, where it says parking facilities required, on page, hopefully what is 4 of 17 of your version, where it reads there's staff approval for adding additional spaces. We can add those conditions under there. Or I can just add to the table that EV spaces don't count towards the maximum. We can put that in the table that follows, under F. However, you'd like me to do that, and then we'll add the dimensional requirements before it goes to the board of commissioners for those things.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I want to get into a drafting discussion now. I'll defer to whatever you and staff come up with. I just...
Okay.
I think I'm okay with either scenario that you just mentioned. I just want to make sure that ultimately, there's some way that somebody can not lose their maximum because they're putting in EV spaces or a solar carport. And that if they want that approval from the staff, it's an administrative approval that doesn't require them to pay some special alternative standard fee or something like that.
Okay.
Brad, do you know generally what I'm talking about? Okay.
And again, not in a drafting discussion, you also maybe want to be careful about specifically saying EV as opposed to maybe alternative fuel or something like that, in case technology changes and it ends up being a...
Right, we, yes, Brad Tippin, planning and development. Brad Tippin, planning and development.
Still not on?
Yeah, I think you turned it off.
You gotta check one, too.
It's on her, she's running that, she doesn't hear that loud. Yeah, it's, uh, we, we've talked about the language to allow for that.
Here you stand, please. Right?
Hold me on your left foot.
Brad Tippin, planning and development. Yes, we have actually talked about some language for that and some ways to allow for some of those newer technologies that are green-oriented to be able to be done in an easier manner with fewer hurdles. So, we're working on some language in other areas of the code as well, to kind of try to make that possible. So, we'll work that in here.
I just know that when we do landscaping, you put some language in that allows you to administratively waive landscaping.
Vehicle, vehicle use areas that require certain amounts of landscaping, if solar chargers or anything like that, EV chargers, other things like that, have to impact that landscaping, they're not penalized for that.
That's all I'm looking for, something similar for parking.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's what this is, is what the parking space is. We've had situations where a, a parking lot has their buffer right around the parking, and the parking's right there, and they need to remove one of the landscape islands to be able to put in the charging portals. And they didn't get penal, we don't penalize them for that. So, we're allowing that.
Yeah, and so, for example, if they, you might have put in any kind of charger, it doesn't have to be EV.
Right.
The hydrogen tank, okay?
Yep.
It may, it may reduce the dimensions of the parking stall, and so I don't want them to, that can be considered a violation of the code.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can work with the language to make sure that we're allowed to make that decision administratively on a case-by-case basis, looking at the different types of scenarios. Because like you said, we can't predict the technology that's coming. We have some idea of some of it, but we don't want to reinvent the wheel 50 times on this.
Right. Okay, I think staff has direction and the consultant have direction, but, so I'm done. Go ahead, John.
Okay, Catherine, are you done with your presentation, then? You're on the question?
Yes, I am.
You're on the question and answer mode?
Regarding the...
Yep.
All right.
Regarding the allowance of 20% pervious parking materials for lots over 100 spaces, I'm not, why do we need that? The code already allows for. In fact, you can make 100% of the parking spaces pervious spaces under our current code, so why would I limit it to 20%? Section 8, which you haven't crossed out, says surfacing any off-street parking area shall be graded for proper drainage, shall be surfaced so as to provide durable and dustless surface, including but not limited to gravel, that's pervious, concrete, which could be pervious concrete, bituminous concrete, which can also be pervious asphalt, stabilized vegetation, which you're specifically allowing in your exception, and shall be so arranged. So, the, your strike and underline's actually limiting the amount of pervious surface that could be currently constructed under our current code. I get people that come in all the time, they want to build a boat and RV storage, and they say they want to pave it. Well, you don't need to pave it, and then they're gonna use up half your site in stormwater ponds. Our code already allows, as long as it's dust-free. In fact, we recommend.
Under the current language, it reads, if parking spaces are provided in excess of 10% of the required parking, those excess parking spaces are in... if parking spaces are provided in excess of 10% of the required parking, those excess parking spaces are encouraged to be pervious or, um, in low impact.
What I'm saying is.
What I've offered, that it's just more than 100, then you can have, I can reword it however you like, but it does, you do have a limitation to many.
Under the current code, you can already build 100% of it as pervious. In fact, I've already done.
Not under section.
I already have a project that's built and CO'd. It's right on Little Road. I'm, it's 100% pervious pavement.
Oopsie. Yeah, this, there's a specific section under what is currently E and I've read that red lettered F. That just says only that which above is in excess of. So, so I understand what you're trying to, what you want me to do.
I'm not wanting to do anything. I'm asking you to change. Code already allows us to make 100% of the parking pervious. We don't need to put in a limitation.
It sounds like maybe you have a, an internal conflict in your code. Um, let's see.
Brad, you want to?
Cause I think what you're referencing is a different section.
I might be able to, might be able to help a little bit with this. Brad Tippin, planning and development. Um, we, we had a code provision that if you go above a, a certain percentage of the code requirement that we have now, uh, it was a requirement for the remainder to be impervious. And I think that there was a, some mistranslation of that language. You can do an entire impervious parking lot short of the ADA space.
You mean pervious.
I'm sorry, pervious. Thank you.
And there are actually some pervious materials which will meet the ADA, by the way.
Yes. So, so that is something that we currently do allow. So, you know, that may be just a, a language translation piece on there that we need to fix.
All that being said, I don't know how many of you are familiar with pervious pavements or use of gravel. They're great from a stormwater perspective. But, you know, one of the require, one of the reasons we have those stormwater ponds to collects the runoff off of roadways and parking lots is because there's a lot of brake dust. There's a lot of motor oil, a lot of antifreeze, a lot of car fluids, transmission fluid that leaks out of cars. When it rains, that flushes off the pavement and is caught in a stormwater retention system where it is, I'm gonna use the term loosely, Jamie, to understand what I mean, treated before discharge. If I park in a pervious concrete parking space or a gravel parking space and my car leaks oil, guess where that oil just went? So that's the part that people don't like to talk about, about that technology. So it's not the panacea that we all, it might be great when it comes to stormwater. But it may not necessarily be great for the groundwater. So just food for thought. I'm not opposed to pervious pavement and I'm not suggesting we should outlaw it. I'm not, I'm suggesting we should not think it's that our savior. There's a lot of talk about quote, green infrastructure and they focus on this, but that's the part they don't tell you about. Who wrote the background to this agenda memorandum?
Catherine, did you catch that question?
I didn't, I did not. Um, I only wrote the strikeout and underline.
So it's authorless?
Mr. Jamali is here to answer that question.
I'm here, Jamali, planning and development department.
What's excess vehicle usage?
Excess vehicle?
Yeah, it says here that we're doing this because we want to reduce excess vehicle use. Says that the, the purpose of this is for increasing impervious surfaces and heightened carbon emissions from excess vehicle use. So I want to know what is excess vehicle use? It's right on the first page.
Third paragraph.
And we were moving along so nicely, you know?
Please go back to me. I think it's a type of excessive vehicle usage. So additional vehicle usage can be reduced.
Well, what is that?
Well, if you're.
What, what constitutes an excess of vehicle usage?
No, excess U. Yeah.
Whether it be excess or excessive, what is excessive vehicle usage?
Uh, i- if you can provide opportunities for people to use other modes of transportation.
And you rode the bus here today?
No, I did not ride the bus.
I see. Brad, did you ride the bus here today? Denise?
Yes, sir.
Liam?
But that would be a, that would be a symptom. Yeah, that, that, it's a chicken and the egg situation. If there's too, broadly speaking, if there's too much parking in a particular area, distances are made wider between spaces, requiring additional means of transportation beyond just walking and bicycling, which for most people translates to a car. But if you can limit the number of parking spaces and reduce the space between buildings, you increase the chances for other types of modes of transportation to be used, broadly speaking.
Well, to play devil's advocate though, I know what John's point is. So my car doesn't have any carbon emissions, but I still occupy.
Well, no, not out of the rear end of the car. It just comes out of the power plant.
Comes out of the lithium mine, the lithium mine and the, the smelting to make, to make the.
Which may occur outside of Pasco County. I'm talking about in Pasco County.
We're worried about our backyard.
Take the battery out of the car when it's no longer rechargeable and have to dispose of the toxic waste, but go ahead. We don't have a lithium mirror.
My point is that it is possible to have vehicle use that doesn't generate heightened carbon emissions.
That still occupies a parking space.
That still occupies a parking space.
Did you know that when you ride a bicycle, every time you exhale, you exhale carbon dioxide? So if more people ride bicycles and they're breathing harder, I guess they're imparting more carbon dioxide into the atmosphere. But that's of course, if you actually believe this stuff.
Yeah, for me, the, yeah, for me, the issue, well, from a planning standpoint, I'm looking at it from the, uh, the spatial perspective of how great our distances become when we have too many vehicles. And, uh, you come, and we need to accommodate that number of vehicles constantly.
Terry.
Well, shouldn't that be dependent on the density of the particular project though? So there's, there's some spots where if you're out in the middle of the county, in the middle of nowhere somewhere, you're gonna be driving there regardless, right? If you're in the middle of an urban center, yeah, that might make more sense. But shouldn't the code be more written to address that based on density of the project? If, if that's what, if that, if that's what the issue is?
Yes, and I think the idea is to, by converting to maximums, you have the flexibility within there to conform the developments to the marketplace.
What are you gonna do when one of my private land development clients wants to build a retail store or a restaurant that has zero parking?
I think, Terry, and I think to answer that, I interject here for a second. And obviously, this is, it's a hard balancing act. I don't know what the right answer is here and I don't know that there necessarily is a right answer. But along those same lines, I think you, by doing this, you potentially create, unless there's something that I'm not seeing, I think you potentially create a lot of other issues outside of just parking. If somebody comes in and wants to do a use, I mean, what does the county have or how, how's the county gonna react? To John's question exactly, is when somebody comes in for a user and the way this is written with a maximum, I mean, if I bring a fast food restaurant in and I want to put zero parking on my site, on an out parcel that is in an existing, the, let's take an out parcel in an existing shopping center. There's plenty of parking there. They can use the other parking. Well, all of a sudden, you start taking away parking from those other people. Or what if it's adjacent to an existing right of way and all those cars start parking in the right of way? What is, what is access management traffic? What do they think of that? I mean, I think there's, there's so many other things and if we, if we strictly go to maximum and there's no minimum, I think we open up Pandora's box and it's very dangerous.
Personally, understand that American shopping trends have changed, especially post pandemic. Okay? Along comes, we all used to go, well, Jamie, you've been here long enough and Chris has been here long enough and Chuck's been here long enough. There was a time when we were happy to have a strip center here. You know why? Cause there was nothing here. All right? And we drove to the, the strip center. And then when we, boy, in 1980, I'll never forget when the Gulf U Square Mall opened. You know, I rode my bike there. I wasn't old enough to drive yet. That mall's dying. A lot of the strip centers along US 19 are dying. A lot of the ones in Zephyr Hills have died. People's shopping changes. People's shopping habits have changed. So I think some of the commissioners drive up and down 19 or 98 or 301 and they sees a lot of empty parking. They see a lot of empty parking lots because we have a bunch of dead shopping centers. And what I would tell you, if you go out there to the outlet mall or Wiregrass, you're gonna drive around the parking lot seven times before you find a parking space. And they've all met this requirement. So it's a matter of where that business, where that commerce has gone. I would tell you that based on a lot of people shopping and purchasing things online, I might be supportive of a reduction in parking requirements, but not the elimination of parking requirements. That is a very, very dangerous precedent. And I can tell you, if this ordinance passes, it won't be more than 60 or 90 days before you see an application come in with his seal on it or my seal on it or Greg Wagner's seal, he's gone. One of those where you're gonna literally have zero parking because I have, I, in fact, I can think of a client right now who I know would do that. And then he will have parking. He will have people trying to park on the sidewalk on 52 or parking on his neighbor's properties and creating a nuisance. I don't think this is a good idea. And you know, for all of the urbanization that we're looking for, I don't think anybody has a vision of connected city having 50 and 60 story office towers. I'll call it connected city is not urbanized, it's more intensely suburbanized. And people are still going to use their vehicles, whether those be EVs and I'm not against EVs. And the EV, so, okay, you won't have to provide parking for all of us poor schleps that drive those fossil fuel cars. But you'll have to provide 10,000 charging stations for all the people like David that need to charge their car because it won't go the other 10 miles back home. And by the way, then they'll be occupying the spaces longer because of how long it actually takes to charge that car. Especially if they want to do it with solar, that's 15% efficient.
We're getting into a separate issue with that, which, which I agree, but I, I have some other thoughts on that that I'd like to share too. But, uh, to answer the question basically on the zero parking in the regulation and us using a maximum, the county is not uh, the determiner of how many parking spaces a business needs. We, we don't know that. The business knows that.
Yeah, but there's a reason that this code exists, Brad.
But the, but the, the other thing is that there are other regulatory factors there in that a, a business that wants to, or somebody wants to come and put a McDonald's in, the McDonald's corporation is going to want a certain amount of parking spaces. Or if you're going to get financing, a financing company is maybe not going to agree to finance you if there's no parking. But there are other regulatory things that impact that, that the county doesn't necessarily need to be the one controlling that factor.
But that doesn't affect all. It doesn't affect all and it doesn't affect everybody. Now, I can tell you, I've designed hundreds, if not a thousand, parking lots over my career and I've done it for the major national retailers and I've done it for the mom and pop businesses. I can tell you, for instance, Publix, they're not gonna take a site unless they can have a certain minimum amount of parking. All right? But there are some mom and pop business and I can think of one who's been recently through my door in the past month, who I told him, go find another site because there's not adequate access, there's not adequate parking. And he would love it if all of a sudden there were no parking and I can assure you, all of his customers will be parking on his neighbor's property or trying to park on the sidewalk on 52. And I don't think we've thought that far.
There, there's the other, um, piece of the puzzle too, which is that when a development comes in, they have to program their site and go through the site development and site planning process. If you forego the option for parking, let's say, in the, in the event somebody comes in with zero parking spaces. If you forego the option for parking, you're increasing your risk of, of doing things that are unprogrammed on site, such as allowing patrons parking on your grass or on your sidewalk or something strange like that. And that would be then a violation of an approved site plan. So it behooves the property owner and the site developer to apply necessary accommodations.
The damage is already done, though.
The damage is done at that point. That's correct.
And now it's a code enforcement issue and it creates a nuisance and there's PO'd neighbors and.
But I do think that the marketplace is self-regulating itself on the, on this count.
Well, then in that case, let's just eliminate the entire land development code and the market can self-regulate itself too.
So, Terry, some of our code, unfortunately or fortunately, is to deal with bad actors. I mean, they're, they're, I, I don't disagree with you that the Publixes of the world are not going to provide no parking. Or the McDonald's or all, the major retail companies are not gonna do that. But you could have a, to John's point, a mom and pop that doesn't have a lender, doesn't, you know, they're just building it with cash. And they can get more square feet of their business if they don't provide any parking. Don't disagree that it helps the tax base, but I mean, what happens when they start parking on the neighbor's property or the sidewalk or, I mean, is code enforcement prepared to now have an increasing level of enforcement when that happens?
Doesn't one have to ask themselves why we had a parking code to begin with? Because these things were problems to begin with.
So I was gonna ask the consultant, are there any jurisdictions that have both a minimum and a maximum? I mean, cause.
Yes.
Cause it seems like.
Yeah.
I'm not hearing any concern with imposing a maximum because, which is ultimately what I think you all are trying to achieve, you don't want overparked sites.
I haven't got that far yet.
Mr. Girardi didn't seem to have an issue with it.
I hadn't got there yet.
Never mind.
No, and really, I, I mean, I, I, my background or my question on the maximum was more of what's the relief procedure? Lines, there are, you know, certain retailers that do require something that may exceed what is out, now gonna be outlined as a maximum.
Concepts which come along and although this says one can submit information, there's no process in this ordinance established by how that is reviewed in our.
So, but, but I'm, but I'm going by, the board had a desire for a maximum and whether that was a good idea or a bad idea.
Well, I don't know that the board has all the information and that's why they put us in this position to make recommendations.
Was the board presented with an alternative of a minimum and a maximum? And did, was it specifically rejected?
Um, let me pull up that particular PowerPoint and I will tell you. Just give me a second to access that file.
Off the hook, Brad.
Well, who had the meeting with the board?
Oops, wrong one.
You know, transit's a good thing. And I'm not against transit. But you know, I had a discussion with more, I don't want to call them old because they're probably listening. I know they were gonna pay attention to this discussion today on YouTube, so I'm gonna say older than me. But they're retired and they're facing the years where they may have difficulties with mobility. In fact, one's had a stroke and has difficulty with mobility. So if the whole idea is we're all gonna ride the bus because there's no parking spaces, I want to know how the gentleman who's had the stroke or the guy yesterday in front of my office who was an Iraq war veteran and accidentally fell out of his motorized wheelchair and his prosthetic leg fell off. If anybody's thought about the burden of how those people get to a bus stop because you can't have a bus stop and pick up at every individual person's house. And even though we may have lots of multifamily buildings going to be constructed in connected city, we're not going to demolish the nice homes of the residents in Beacon, well, they're not here either, that live in Beacon Woods. So people are going to drive.
Or be driven.
And the other thing that I think we need to think about when we talk about urbanization, we have a lot of people that come to this community and they're willing to buy those 40-foot lots that are the long, a lot of the longtime residents, including myself, don't like. But that's what they like. And you know why they like that? Because they fled that urban environment. Those people left Chicago. They left New York City. They left Los Angeles to come to Florida because that's the last envi- because that's the last environment they wanted to live in. And frankly, that's exactly why my parents moved here and relocated us to Florida when I was a young child. That's why they're here. And if they wanna live on an urban environment, in an urban environment, there's plenty of that down in the southeast corner of this state. Or I would also tell them that Interstate ninety-five and Interstate seventy-five also have northbound lanes as well. But that's not why they moved to Pasco County, the place with the vibrant spaces and open places.
So to answer the question, I was in several of those meetings with commissioners and I do not recall the combination of a minimum and a maximum being discussed. We looked at changing minimums, changing from a minimum to maximum and then some other locationally specific criteria and different things like that. The other thing that I'd need to make sure that everyone kinda keeps in the back of their mind, and I know it's kind of a taboo topic these days to talk about, but it's autonomous vehicles and it's ride sharing. The person with the stroke can absolutely call an Uber to take them somewhere. That car does not necessarily need a parking space, it needs a loading and unloading area. The, uh, the autonomous vehicles can have a centralized location where they can park, that's not necessarily at this building.
You know how quick they'd go broke on a fixed income, calling Uber every time they get a ride?
I'm just saying that I think that we need to keep, keep in mind that there are other alternatives.
And we're not at autonomous vehicles yet. And although Tesla and other companies are working feverishly to develop them, so far we've found that the Tesla quite isn't capable of recognizing a semi-truck crossing its path and we've seen lots of photographs of decapitated Teslas.
So that's, that's a whole nother discussion we can have. But the, the, the world seems to believe that they will be here within the horizon of what we would think of the things that we're...
And that, and that may be the time to update that code. But, you know, I can, I can speak on the whole ride share and the disability thing. My, my wife is CEO of the Lighthouse for the Blind. They absolutely rely on people to drive them places to, to get to where they need to be. One of the big services that they relied upon is the ARC. I don't know if anybody's familiar with the ARC. The ARC just lost their FDOT funding and then we still haven't figured out the reason why. We don't know if it was a line of veto at the state level or what it was, but they lost their funding. And there's a ton of visually impaired people that really relied on that transportation that now is, is in a... And, you know, we actually had a presentation at, at a fundraiser for the lighthouse the other night. And, and one of the visually impaired ladies was talking about how she, you know, she can't buy frozen foods at the grocery store because she's on the bus for four hours to be able to get to where she needs to go. So, you know, there's, this may be a better conversation when some of these transit developments are, you know, when we have a better bus network, when we have a better transit network. But for now, we're still pretty reliant on vehicles.
That's, that's part of it, it's kind of a chicken and the egg thing.
Now, what you're trying to do is, Brad, what you're trying to do is force it. And the problem that I got is this, is you guys are the staff, all right? You work for the government that is of the people, by the people, and for the people. No one elected any of you to decide what is excess vehicle usage or when it's appropriate for me to drive or me to walk. That's why we have elections.
So, but this goes to the root of my question about what, because the board is ultimately a policy decision for the Board of County Commissioners. Okay, so there's apparently some board direction to do something.
I understand.
But, but I'm, I'm not convinced that the board was presented with an option that addresses some of the concerns that you all are talking about. If they were never given an option of, hey, there's some jurisdictions that do put a cap on ma, that do do maximum, but they have a floor too, which, to make sure that there's some minimum amount of parking. And I get your point about transit, but I think, I've heard the commissioner say, you get a site like Target at Mitchell Ranch, okay? Well, there are probably too many parking spaces for that Target, even in a suburban environment. And so I do understand why the board has a general desire and it's, there, there could be a building there that's helping our tax base instead of just empty parking spaces. Even during Christmas, that, those spaces are empty. So there probably is some reasonable maximum that prevents that situation from occurring and that may be why the board wanted a maximum, they don't want dead, dead parking zones.
Maybe, maybe it's not a maximum. Maybe it's a reduction of the required minimum.
Right.
I understand, in fact, I spoke...
My guess is that Target was well excessive of our requirement.
My company does a lot of stormwater work for a major national retailer, okay? And I spoke to a representative of that retailer yesterday. And what they tell me is that for the type of business that they run, for instance, our current retail parking requirement is one space per three hundred square feet. That it would be ideal for them if it were one space per three hundred and fifty square feet. They actually find that Pasco's minimums are not as onerous as some of the surrounding counties. Pinellas, for instance, requires one space per every two hundred and fifty square feet. They find that that provides more parking than they need to operate their business, but that a lesser minimum might be advantageous. And I do understand that, a lot of people shop online, a lot of people preorder at Publix and drive in there and pick this stuff up. And it does perhaps lessen the need for the num, the minimum number of spaces that we needed at a previous time in history. But it doesn't eliminate the need for parking. And although there may be things, and we can all debate whether they're great or not, about autonomous vehicles and ride shares and all of that, those are things that are promised. They may come, we don't know how long it'll come. I don't frankly see autonomous vehicles driving around Newport Richie in the next thirty days or however it longs takes to enact this ordinance. In fact, look what Newport Richie had to do. To keep the downtown alive, they recognized they needed more and more parking. Finally had to build a five or six-story parking garage over behind Kaiser College to accommodate their parking needs. I will tell you that that parking garage is not full on a day-to-day basis, but if the city grows to what it aspires to be, it will be.
It's full on Chaska, for sure.
For sure.
So, but I'm just trying to make sure we do something that's consistent with it. I think there is a general board intent to produce, to, to put a cap on, because there are some sites that probably,
There are.
under any scenario would be considered overparked.
But again, if one drive...
Is there any empirical data regarding those sites where you actually have, I know there's traffic studies that are done for traffic, so has there been any...
So there, there is some empirical data, but generally when we, we usually get requests to reduce parking. When we get requests to reduce parking, people will provide us with the data from their sites as to how to do it. You know, this is what we usually use, this is how we function. And that tends to be what we consider to be more accurate. We believe our numbers are fairly arbitrary. The, the numbers that were put in there originally, those minimum parking numbers, I mean, they were based on something possibly at the time, but it's obviously overparking, it's parking for a maximum day. You know, the day after Thanksgiving shopping, Black Friday shopping, and then, you know, three hundred and sixty-four days a year, it's half-empty. So we're, we're trying to look at that and look at the max. You know, I don't think anybody on our side is opposed to, you know, incorporating some level of minimum. The problem is that, that again, that's gonna be a relatively arbitrary number at this point.
Well, there's the, for instance, if we want something to base it on, there's the I T E parking generation. That's a possibility.
Okay, so, but the consultant just told us there are some jurisdictions that do minimums and maximums.
Yes, and there are some that do absolutely none whatsoever.
I understand that, but, but...
And they function perfectly fine too, so.
I mean, how hard would it be to look at the jurisdictions that have done minimums and maximums to see? My guess is if they're imposing a maximum, their minimum floor is probably pretty low. And it may, but it's probably better than zero, which is what I think part of the concern up here is. Is you could have a bad actor that puts in zero and...
Or very minimal.
And now they force that impact on others around them.
You know, for all this concern about vehicle usage and transit, one of the things that this thing doesn't do, and I had to laugh because I watched the last commission meeting, and there's this concern for drive-throughs. You wanna talk about a big energy waster and carbon emitter? How many people sit and waste how much gas every morning sitting in that Starbucks drive-through? In fact, if they wanna do something about drive-throughs, they need to be a conditional use and the operators of those drive-throughs need to be told that if your drive-through traffic backs up out on US nineteen, and I'm talking to Dunkin' Donuts, South of Ranch Road, backs up onto US nineteen every day and causes a traffic jam, if you can't figure out how to clear those cars out of the drive-through, we're gonna yank your conditional use for the drive-through. But you know, for all this business about carbon emissions, we're a society that's gonna sit in a drive-through at the bank, sit in a drive-through at McDonald's, sit in a drive-through at Walgreens and burn up, you could have parked in the space we're going to eliminate, stopped the carbon emission and walked in the store, got back out and got in your EV that didn't make the same type of mission.
I think we're also...
So there is a separate LDC amendment that's going to come through dealing with drive-throughs. Let's try to focus on parking today. I don't disagree with you, I'm saying, but, but given the time we have, can we try to get some, some consensus on how to deal with parking?
Can we, can we come down to consensus maybe that we need to have a minimum and a maximum and not just a maximum?
So I would like, David, the board directed us to come up with something related to maximums. So do we want this recommendation to go back and add a minimum? I mean, we can certainly do that if you feel that that's appropriate, but we don't want to appear that we're not following the board direction.
Well, of course, we would never put you in that position, Brad.
If we're here to make a recommendation to the board and when we're reviewing it and we come up with all these concerns, I think it's our obligation, then so, when we recommend to the board, what we think some of those concerns are.
So part of the reason I asked my original question was if the board was never presented an option of minimum and maximum, then adding a minimum back in, some minimum, isn't necessarily inconsistent with the board direction because they were never presented with that option. Is that accurate?
Can I answer that question for you? Um, I'm looking at my PowerPoint that we presented originally to the HRT and that staff later took to each board member. And the case studies that I included on the parking maximum slide, which was option two, there were three case studies I included that there, there are no minimums and they added maximums. And then the fourth case study was they just did maximums for retail and office. So no, in this PowerPoint, I did not add a community that had minimums and maximums. However, I did bring it up with the HRT at last meeting when we were presenting this draft. And I said, "Look, um, just, you know, if you remember from the last time, we offered the parking minimum, the parking maximums and that's the way the board decided to go." But I said, "There are communities that have done minimums and maximums, we do want me to look at that." And they said, "No, move forward, this is good, we like it."
Okay, but that's HRT, that's HRT, not our board.
Right, so what I, exactly, so let me, let me get there. Why don't I, if there's consensus among the board members, I can go back and add minimums that aren't obnoxious, but that do address your concerns. And that can go on, you know, we can change the timing of the, um, when, uh, when it goes to the board if we need to. But I can go in and this week and add some minimum, move the ordinance forward with your other comments as well.
Catherine, can you elaborate on what do you mean by minimums which are not obnoxious?
Well, if you kinda take a look at how you're built out now, particularly looking at, um, you know, where you have your county complex. I've been up there now a couple of times for meetings and you guys have an obnoxious amount of parking. You could fit like five more buildings into your county complex in some of the parking areas. So understanding that, you know, things like restaurants and coffee shops and, you know, those things, they need a minimum amount of parking, right? Depending on the size of the, if that makes sense.
I'm sorry, but I've been to differ with you on that.
The parking standards you have now are, are great.
I've been here on days when I've had to circle this parking lot to find a parking space, so I, I, I disagree with that.
If all of them are complex, it's a lot of space.
You've been here a couple of times and that's been the case. But I've been here and I can assure you, I've been here when there is zero to very little parking available, depending upon what's going on here.
So I, I don't think we can provide an answer at all today on what we think those minimums should be. So if we need to continue this, we can continue this.
I think that's a good idea.
Well, I think the bottom, I mean...
Have another discussion with the board, we can do another round with the board talking about the minimum, maximum and see if that is something they do want. And if they say, yes, we do want that, we can actually go through, it is a work effort to go through and produce those minimums. So if they decide that they don't want that, then we will bring this back like we're...
My personal suggestion, and, and I don't, the board, they're not a group of, they're not planners, they're not engineers, and for the most part, they're not commercial developers that build parking spaces, okay? So they may not recognize immediately the ramification of the word maximum. And I'm sure, like I said, some of them have gone and they've seen these dark shopping centers, they see this sea of parking and there's clearly those could be other uses and I don't disagree with that. My personal recommendation, and I'm going to speak to some of the commissioners about that, well, that we not adopt maximums, but that we look at reduced minimums. I think that's a, that's a better way to get to the goal that we're trying to achieve, that they're trying to achieve. I get the idea there are competing goals of what the board wants to do and what certain planners might want.
So if that's the will of the board, how do we advance this? Do we continue this and make that recommendation or how?
Well, okay, the will, you took up the will of the board to...
That's will, no, that's a will of this plan and commission to make that recommendation. How do we advance this item we're speaking about to, do we continue it with that recommendation to the B C C?
If you don't like the idea of maximums at all, then you probably just need to, I mean, now you're going directly against what apparently the board directed, so, you know, I guess you could just move it forward and say you don't, I mean, ultimately you're supposed to determine it as a consistent with the comp plan, but I'm not sure the comp plan gets into this little detail anyway. But you could, you could make a recommendation that it does not be approved. I mean, because there's no compromise position of adding some minimum, I mean, because adding minimums in is sort of an amendment to what the initiative is. But are you saying you don't want any maximums at all?
What I'm saying is it may be an initiative that on its face might have sounded good to solve a problem that was perceived but perhaps needed more thought. And now that there's been some discussions, and I'm sure, and I know that certain commissioners listen to these and hopefully they're thinking and digesting about this conversation and whether or not maximum is really appropriate. As I said, my personal recommendation is a reduction in the minimums. The minimums that we have in our code were developed in a different time and age before we had an Amazon dot com or Walmart online and Target online and, or a pandemic where we all had to go pick the food up and bring it home because the restaurant was closed. So I understand people's behaviors have changed.
But ultimately, the primary focus of this amendment is imposing maximums. So if you don't like that concept at all, and that there never would be a maximum, then my recommendation would be that you just...
Well, we actually haven't talked too much.
Recommend that the board not do this.
We focused a little bit about that and I'm not necessarily, I, I told them, my personal recommendation is for reduced minimums. But if we wanted to have maximums, at least in the ordinance, set out a clear procedure for how one goes about getting approved something beyond the maximum. There may be new concepts, in fact, I've seen this happen throughout my career. Some new restaurant comes out and it's a smashing success. And everybody in town wants to go there and you got a two-hour wait to get in the door, okay? So they need some more parking than maybe the code contemplated for that type of restaurant.
So I think there is some language in there currently that allows...
But it says you can submit it, but then it doesn't say how it's going to be evaluated and or adjudicated.
So...
With alternative standard process that we use for everything.
Okay, so that's the kind of tweak that you could recommend that staff, just like I talked about with the E V allowance and all that stuff. That's the kind of tweak to the initiative that you could recommend a specific amendment to that language to create specific criteria about how you deviate from the maximum. But if you're just saying there shouldn't be any maximum at all...
Well, we don't want everybody asking for... Well, we don't want everybody asking for an alternative standard every time they want to do something too, because then we're back to exactly what the ULI told us not to do, which is zoning by variance.
Yeah, I mean, you would know, it stands to reason that they would build the minimum amount of parking spots that they possibly could, any developer would do that. So you shouldn't have to approve over, overage to the maximum. The minimum should be really what the focus is.
I think one of the biggest points that we made, and John made really, and I was thinking about it is, this board has the good fortune to have three engineers on this board that think about things like that. And I think you made the point that, you know, B O C C, most of them are familiar with construction, most of them are familiar with the way these things work. But there are nuances to these things that, as an engineer, you're going to think about more than if you weren't an engineer. So these things need to be brought to their attention.
So my point is, is that it's one thing to say the language about how you deviate from the maximum needs to be beefed up, it's another to say there shouldn't be a maximum at all. I mean, you all do what you want, you recommend whatever you want. I'm just saying that at some point, if you're just saying the whole idea is bad, then you're better off just.
Well, I'd like to speak to that real quick, if I may. I apologize for jumping in here during the discussion, but I realize that there are. I realize there are a number of engineers up here, but, you know, you have an entire team of professional planners, national associations of professional planners, certified planners that do this for a living specifically related to parking, that the entire best practice policies right now are in line with what we're talking about. So when you're saying you think this is a bad idea, I really kind of have to take some.
I'm sorry, and this is something I had prepared, and I did not want to go here. But now you've opened up the door, and I'm going to go here. Everyone sitting up on this board today, other than Mr. Williams, because he represents the school board, holds a professional license sanctioned by the state. The only people in this room that don't hold a license are planners. They may be certified by their own professional association, but they are not certified by any government entity.
David, we don't recommend this just be continued, we'll discuss it. That's, we're not going to be abused.
No, we're not being abused. No, I'm making a statement.
Okay, so getting back to, so let's.
And are you a member of the AICP?
Okay, let's, regardless.
Let's get back on track.
So staff hired a consultant, the consultant's made a recommendation. I was trying to see if there was some middle ground where we could propose a tweak to add minimums and to potentially change the criteria for how you deviate from the maximums. I think those are potential amendments that staff could work on if you continued it to, either continued it or turned it to the board with those recommended changes. If you don't think there should be a maximum, you fundamentally disagree with the concept of a maximum, my recommendation would be that you just send that recommendation to the board and let the board do what they want to do. That's up to you all to decide what you want to do. But at some point, you can't just tweak what they're proposing if you just fundamentally think a maximum's a bad idea. So.
I know, that's what John stated, I personally agree with that as well.
So then you're better off, I mean, I will tell you, the board doesn't always agree with you. They didn't agree with you on park impact fees. You guys proposed a bunch of recommendations and they rejected every single one of them. Okay, so you all can do whatever you want to do. My point is that, at some point, you can't fix, there are probably, if you're willing to live with a maximum, you can probably fix some of the stuff, add minimums, things like that. But if you're not willing to live that, you're better off just recommending that the board not pursue the amendment.
Catherine, can I ask a few questions here, just particular to this? Other municipalities that have maximums, what is their procedures? Or are there common procedures out there for developments that want to exceed the maximums? I mean, are there, I'm sure there's standard provisions, requirements.
I have one pulled up, and so let me just look what their process is. One of the case studies that I looked at for this, let's see.
And the reason I'm asking that question, I just didn't see in here where that was outlined. And my suggestion would be to add something, but I'm trying to figure out what to discuss or to talk about adding.
One of the case studies that I had in that original PowerPoint was Dunwoody, Georgia. And they have a similar alternative compliance option where it says, it just reads, the applicant submits a parking study or survey prepared by a signed and sealed registered professional in the state of Georgia with expertise in parking and transportation, demonstrating that the motor vehicle parking ratios do not accurately reflect the actual parking demand that can reasonably be anticipated for the proposed. So they can turn something in to the staff and have it administratively approved.
That sounds similar to our alternative standard process, basically.
Exactly.
All right, now, in particular going through your red line, I've got a few questions here. The compact ratio, the ratio of compact spaces, it looks like in most categories it was eliminated. However, there's, you know, a couple, for example, the vet, office, animal hospital, it looks like it's still to remain 75-25, was that intentional?
I took it out of the table and put it under the beginning of section F and just said that it's a 50-50 split. They can do a 50-50 split, I just took it out of the table.
On page 16 of the red line, it's not, there's no strike through. So just, I just wanted.
That makes me just a typo then, thank you.
I didn't know if it was a typo, I just wanted to bring that up. So essentially what.
Oh, thanks.
Unless it's specifically outlined like for non-medical administrative or government where it's 75-25, somebody could do, under what's proposed, could do 100% compact spaces.
No, they can do 50%.
It's 50-50, okay, I'm with you.
50-50, yeah. What was it that I missed? Can you show, which one?
Page 16 of the, of the strike-through version, it's under veterinary, animal hospital?
Oh, okay, that, my page numbers are different than your page numbers.
Yeah, it's under companion animal uses, above the kennels.
Mine is struck, my version is struck. I'll make sure that it's corrected before it goes on. Okay.
Okay.
In any event, the provision was 50-50.
And as you guys were looking at this ordinance, was there any, did you guys look at or were you asked to look at standard dimensions? I know there was some stuff added to the table for the dimensions, but I know there's other local municipalities that a standard space is smaller than nine by 20, and then there's others in the area as you go north where a standard space is larger than nine by 20. I mean, is nine by 20 standard and, or you guys didn't even look at that?
10 by 20 is what most local governments have adopted. And those are pretty, that's a generous parking space. Nine by 20 is what you currently have. I would say eight by 20 is too small, because in those cases, those are all the dings I get in the side of my car when a space is less than nine by 20. So I would say don't go lower than that.
So then why, why and how the justification for, in multifamily and non-resident, they even have up to 50% compact car spaces?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Why does, why in this proposed ordinance is multifamily allowed to have up to 50% compact parking? What sets multifamily apart differently from commercial or any other thing that would entitle them to more compact spaces?
Actually, I think they treat them the same way.
That's not how they're, that's not drafted it. It's 50-50 across the board, if it's anything over 10, how many, anything over 10 units, I think.
For what's the purpose? I've got here, published this month, Car and Driver Magazine, of the 25 best-selling cars and trucks and SUVs in the country. Do you want to guess what the top 10 are? Because they're not compact cars. In fact, of the 25, only a couple of them actually qualify as compact based on the definition of compact car from the federal government. So 20 plus of the top 25 cars are not compact.
So do you want to keep it at 75-25?
Well, I'm not sure what I want to do with the ordinance yet. And.
Well, let's assume, let's assume.
I don't mean to be disrespectful, because I'm not, but I'm not negotiating with you about what should be in the ordinance. I'm here to make a recommendation to the commissioners, and that's my mission today.
Yes, but, well, I think we can use this time effectively by giving me some specific direction. That's okay with me. If the board, if all of you agree that it should go back to 75-25, I'm happy to do that before it goes to the board.
Is that with the current, that's the current regulation now?
It is 75-25.
75-25, mhm, happy to make that change back.
I'd be in favor of that. I personally believe that a 50% compact parking ratio in multifamily and non-residential will create a lot of, a lot more dings that you don't like.
So Catherine, was that one that was specifically discussed with the board members? Or is that was just, that was a staff horizontal roundtable type issue?
That was, yeah, just discussed among, that was not discussed with the board, no. We just gave them, the board, the basic options of reduce parking, eliminate parking, maximum or place-based. So those are the four options that we gave in that original PowerPoint that we gave to the horizontal roundtable and that the staff met one-on-one with the board with. Happy to make that change back. I mean, you all know what people are driving around you. Kansas is a different, I live in Kansas, we're a different, slightly different place. And, you know, you know what people are driving around you. So if you think you should go back, happy to make that change.
Maybe, let me just throw out an idea to move this forward. If there are, I think what you've always ended up doing on park impact fees is you basically said, if the ordinance is adopted, we want to see the following changes. I think you could do something similar here. I'm not suggesting that you need to recommend approval of the ordinance, but you could say, if adopted, we recommend that these three changes be made to the ordinance.
Well, let me ask this. One of the things that I found fun, engaging, was when we had our planning training a couple, few weeks ago. And it was an opportunity where, it was a public forum, because of sunshine law reasons, but it was an opportunity where the planning commission could sit in the same room with the county commission. And we could all exchange thoughts and ideas and have a little discussion and debate. And I'm thinking that maybe the best thing for this, I don't want to completely throw this away. I think there's some justification for reductions, or maybe there's, maybe there is some justification. Maybe somebody can convince me there's, that there's a justification for a maximum. But I think it would be helpful if perhaps we could have a workshop where we could all sit and discuss those and exchange those ideas freely with the people that we're here to make recommendations to.
So that's a, that's something that the board, county commissioners would have to.
Well, I understand that.
I could tell you, the board members certainly listened and watched these planning commission meetings. So I don't think, I would not assume that just because you're not in the same room, they're not listening to your comments.
Yeah, but I'm not getting the chance to discuss that with them either, where we can talk openly and talk about the pros and the cons. And I don't want to say everything is bad.
I think there's definitely some good here. I think the bottom line is, I think there's just some things that maybe weren't considered when it went purely to maximum with no minimum, is my position. I think you open up a lot of issues, a lot of potential issues on other sides or other areas that may not have been thought about.
So what I'm suggesting, again, to try to move it along, is, I mean, you could, your motion could be, if the ordinance is adopted at all, I'm understanding you have concerns about it in general, you could say, we want inclusion of some minimums put back in. You know, we want the compact spaces changed to 75-25. We want EVs and solar carports considered. I mean, these are, you could say, if adopted, these are changes that should be made. Nothing to say that then you have to recommend it to be adopted at all. But, because that's basically what you guys did with parks, is you fought about it for three hours. And then at the end of the day, you basically said, if adopted, we want these changes made. So.
So what's the rush? Is there some?
And that's your other option, is continue it. But if we're going to continue it, it should be with some direction to staff to come back with specific. Like, for example, if you want to see, if you want to see the actual minimums before you're prepared to move it forward to the board, that would be a grounds for you to continue the item and ask direct staff to add some minimums in. And so you can see them before it goes to the board.
Shouldn't that be the board's decision to direct them to do that? Are we the correct board to direct somebody to go do something on boards that have?
Still override that.
Yeah, the board could always say, we don't care about, we don't like these minimums that the planning commission and staff came up with, get them, take them all out. They could absolutely do that. What I'm hearing though, this is why I asked the question originally, was the board presented with an option that included both maximums and minimums? The answer was no. Catherine clearly said that. So we don't know how the board feels about adding minimums in.
Right.
You would not necessarily be acting inconsistent with the board's intent if you added some minimums back in. Their direction was impose maximums. Okay, if you say you don't want any maximums at all, that's a different conversation.
So you're saying maybe the idea is to recommend continuance with the addition of some minimums?
Well, if you, it depends on what you want. If you want, before you're willing to recommend something to the board, if you want to see the actual minimums, to see if they're, to quote Catherine, obnoxious or not. I don't know whether, what you guys consider obnoxious. Okay, then that would be a reason to continue. But if you're going to continue, it should be for staff and the consultant to present some modified work product to you.
Right.
If you don't like the idea at all, I'd rather you just say, we don't like it, and board do whatever you want with it.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think we're saying that, but I do think that what you just structured there was, for me, makes sense. The continuance with some direction to.
Establish the minimums for us to review.
Well, just have a chance to look at some minimums. If I were going to do that, and I might, I'd want to look at some minimums. And like I said, I strongly agree with a redu, I know this sounds crazy, a reduction of the minimums, because I do understand people's habits have changed. If we're going to talk about maximums, I think we need to clarify what the procedure will be and how that will be adjudged. I'm sorry if I'm using the wrong term, but I think you know what I mean. There needs to be a procedure. I chuckled a little bit under my breath.
May I offer a suggestion?
Well, hold on a second. I chuckled a little under my breath as you were reading what you said Dunwoody, Georgia did. It was basically, well, go get an engineer to sign and seal that you need more parking, and away you went. Well, maybe that's what we want to do here, I don't know. I, I don't know how one qualifies themselves as a parking expert. I think you said the language included they have to have expertise in parking or something. I don't know how one judges whether one's a. I don't know how one judges whether one's a qualified parking expert or not.
Well, I would, I would guess it would be something similar along the lines of what somebody has to submit if they want to go below the minimum that's in today's ordinance.
It's kind of happening today, yeah.
It's the flip the other way.
Yeah, it's, and Brad left, but.
Right.
They're doing, they, they basically do like a little parking study and say, here's data from other places that are parked and it's perfectly fine with this lesser number of spaces. I guess you could do the revert, to Jamie's point, you could do the reverse on them. You know, show a shopping center that needed that many spaces and that they're, it's fully occupied with cars. I mean, so you can do parking studies, you just, you give case studies from other places that show they needed that many spaces. Catherine, is that kind of what you're talking about?
Yes. Why don't we, if I can offer a suggestion, why don't we just consult the most recent version of the ITE parking standards? ITE's been getting better about recognizing that not every place is completely suburbanized and you have different contexts. And so their, their more recent documents have been reflecting that, that change in society. Why don't we, why don't we consult the most recent ITE parking manual? Bring back some minimums to you all so that you have some comfort to move this forward. And then when it goes to the board, they can strike that provision if they want to. It'll just be a, you know, one column in the table, right? That has the minimums. And if they say, well, that's not what we wanted, we'll strike that. Then, and then they can do that when they get to their meeting. But to give you some comfort, we can make changes to the ordinance and bring it back to you for discussion.
So moved.
And so you would all, Catherine, when you bring it back, you'd also address the compact ratio.
EVs.
Yeah.
You'd fix the, clarify the process.
All the things that you brought.
Clarify the process to deviate from the maximum, deal with the EV, solar carport issue. All the things that were discussed today, that's what you'd bring back to the planning commission.
And although I was quick to say so moved, that we need to put a timeframe on this.
Do we need to?
How much time do you need to do that?
I'm also working on your peril of flood stuff right now that we're trying to get to hearing. Do you have a December meeting?
Yes, there is a December meeting on December 7th and it's in Dade City at 1:30.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we plan for that? Does that give staff enough time to get it through the process?
I believe it does, yes.
So can the board just continue it to that date and then you don't have to re-advertise?
Correct.
I'd be fine with that.
Okay.
We've got to continue it to a specific date to not have to re-advertise.
December 7th, yeah. To December 7th.
I'll come in person next time.
Riding the bus?
No, a bike, she'll be riding a.
I don't, I don't have three days to get there. I've got an hour and a half.
Therein lies the problem, huh?
I, I will second.
Well, yeah.
I will second that long and clarified motion.
Thank you, Derek.
So the motion is to, the motion is to continue it to December 7th. That's in Newport, Ritchie?
No, it's in Dade City at 1:30 in Dade City.
7th in Dade City to address the various comments that we'd noted.
Yes. Which will include a, a look at the ITE minimums for parking.
Everything we've noted.
Alternative fuel.
Yeah.
Compact car ratio.
That good, Amy?
So it sounds like Catherine, you're pretty clear on what you need to address?
Yes.
Okay. If you're the one drafting it, that's, that's the important thing.
I think I got it.
I just got a message from Brad and he would actually prefer it to be to a date uncertain.
Well, that means he's going to have to re-advertise.
I wouldn't be opposed to that either.
He said if there's going to be minimums imposed, he would recommend a date uncertain.
Is that so he can go back to horizontal roundtable? Is that why?
Well, I, just to comment, we got to remember what people's, the horizontal roundtable is engineers and developers, most of those engineers working for the developers. And the purpose of establishing minimums in the code to begin with, when you go to the H, the HRT for an ordinance like that, that's kind of like letting the fox's guard to hen house, so to speak, too. I mean, so we need to be real careful about that.
Well, I, I don't know if there was any explanation in Brad's text.
Probably. They said no when I asked.
They said, who said no?
About minimums.
The horizontal roundtable. I asked them if they wanted me to impose minimums as well as the maximums. They said resoundingly no.
You made Mr. Moody's point for it.
I was listening that day. I didn't participate because I don't want to risk violating the sunshine law, but I do turn those meetings on and listen, yes.
So, but where I was going with it is I don't know that you're going to change their opinion, but I believe staff does like to at least go back to them if some major change has occurred so they can, for example, there may be a minimum there. They say, well, we don't want to use IT for them. We can live with a minimum, but we don't think it should be based on IT for that use. And so you've given them no chance to.
That's, I, that's fair.
To comment on the new minimums.
And at least they're aware of it. And if they've got, you know, issues with it, they can raise their concerns during the meeting. That's.
So do you change your motion to a date uncertain?
So, but if that's the reason Brad wants to continue to a date uncertain, then I don't understand why he would want that, but I don't know why he's.
His responses, they just need time to evaluate the principles and understand that the appropriate minimums would be set.
Fair enough.
Okay.
I think that's a reasonable answer and I would support to a date uncertain if I can get a second.
All right, so if that's your amendment, I will then still second your amended motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that motion?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just add that I don't think anybody up here is saying that there's necessarily anything materially wrong with this, but I think there's other things that need to be considered and to be thought about. I mean, I don't, I know it got a little contentious here and I don't think that was anybody's intention.
We do appreciate the staff's hard work on it.
I think there's a lot of hard work put in here and I think there's, you know, a lot of things to be considered.
Well, and the good news is, I think Catherine's saying these are all things that she can address.
Correct.
And that other jurisdictions have addressed, so.
Yep.
The other thing we need to look at too is other jurisdictions may have addressed, come back and demonstrate that they've addressed them with success.
That's so true.
Just because someone else did it doesn't mean that that worked or was the right thing. Or, and we also have to compare that community, how does that community compare to Pasco County?
It could be a case study in failure for a.
Well, so, so to that point, Catherine, you think you said there was at least one jurisdiction that did minimums and maximums? What jurisdiction was it?
She said Dunwoody.
I don't remember off the top of my head. I remember clicking through that map that I showed you for the Parking Reform Network and going through and seeing who did what. And in hindsight, I probably should have pulled one of those and put in the, in the PowerPoint that did a minimum and maximum, but I'll, I'll have to go back and read them. And I've got no problem picking up the phone and calling their staff and saying, hey, how's it going? And if they say it's terrible, we're sorry we ever did this, then I can relay that back to you.
Yeah, that'd be probably going to be.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion of the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, okay.
Is that a name?
No, I said okay.
Oh, okay.
You kidding me?
I think you had to go to the bathroom and call it a boat quick.
I see, now you're getting personal.
Okay, sorry. So before you, you actually break or you adjourn, so I wanted to provide an update on the laptops. So the laptops will, will be deployed on November 2nd. So at the next planning commission meeting at 1:30 in Dade City. So I'll bring those over to you. IT will be working on moving your profiles over from the old, the iPads into, into the laptops. So that, that should be deployed at that time. And then I also wanted to note that there's a noted item today, which is the public hearing schedule for 2024. So the board accounting commissioners approved the public hearing schedule for 2024 on October 10th. And what I'll do is I'll send you the actual public hearing schedule by email separately, maybe tomorrow or later today.
Denise, just one question on the noted items. I know there was two sets of annotated minutes that were revised from the last meeting. Is it standard for, and I didn't notice it in here, but changes that were made to be like strike underlined? Because I mean, I know although they're in here, I can't remember July 6th meeting and what actually was changed.
I'm going to defer to the clerk's office on that because I think the clerk's office puts together the, the meeting minutes. And perhaps that, was that as a result of one of the planning commission members saying that there is a correction to the meeting minutes?
The motion that was made on those minutes was approved with the corrections made. They were not continued and then brought back to you. So they were approved with the comments you had asked for.
Right, which, and I think it had to do with that the vote was unanimous with the exception of so-and-so or so-and-so.
Yeah, I remember making that, yeah. It was a couple of little technical.
But is your question whether, when those come back, they should show a strike through?
Yeah, or just at least an underline so we can see what was changed. Like I remember the one from August 3rd was the, had to do with the shot clock. Okay, and I, I was able to find that in the 16 pages, but the other one, I couldn't remember what the revision was and I just was, I was trying to remember. But I, I don't know, if that violates some, it was just more of a question than anything else. If it could be done with the underline text or strike through text, I think it would help, that's all. Just a comment.
I just received a message from our supervisor and she said Denise was correct that meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Correct again, Denise.
She's so good.
She's always correct.
Thank you very much.
And if you're listening out there, we still love you, Brad.
Apparently he is because he's texting.
Yeah, that's right. He's in the hall. Okay, is there anything else, Denise?
That's all I've got.
Okay, that's all she's got.
Most of her job.
Parker, we have plenty of time.
Yeah, that's right.
You beat me to it.
If anybody wants any.
I only had one, but I can't believe it.
Maximums, wow. There's a minimum or maximum.
Oh, you could, you could listen to this after you adjourn. I will not be here on November 2nd. I forgot, I'm out of the office because my mom has a surgical procedure. But Liam will be running that meeting and he will be distributing the laptops.
No pressure, Liam, huh?
Sounds divine, no pressure.
Yes.
Oh, boy. I see what you did there.